My understanding of the rules right now, if you want to wear a mask, you can. If you don't, you don't have to. Everybody okay with that? Okay, let's, if everybody will stand, we'll do the pledge allegiance to start out with. We have a flag up on the wall. Pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal. Thank you. Let's go through some of the rules that you're, those of you that attended are probably very used to. Unless there's objection, and this is, I'm going to use that term, unless there's objection, we're going to use the rules set up by the main moderator's panel, which is a very simple parliamentary procedure. So we've done that for years. So seeing no objection, those are the rules we're going to function by today. There are a number of, so we have some non-residents here. Typically, it would require a two-thirds vote to allow a non-resident to speak. We have Michelle Romney with our treasurer, Jennifer Rue with our county administrator, who are non-residents. And again, unless there's objection, I don't see any point in voting because they typically have a lot to do with county government here. What I want to do next is to mention the folks over here. Mary Grant Committee basically is going to be serving lunch from 11:30 or 12:00 if we're still here then. If we're not, you can still stay for lunch. In the meantime, they have goodies for sale, and you're all encouraged to make use of their efforts. We have some guests that we want to talk about, allow them at least to introduce themselves. Your state representative, Ted Rizek, is here. Ted, you want to talk to us briefly?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's still an honor and a pleasure to serve as your representative, and this is my second term. We just finished at 1:30 yesterday morning. So I just want to fill you in on a few bills. I'm the House lead on the taxation committee, so I spent the last six months working on tax bills. There was quite a few of them. There was a 1% tax, sales tax, that municipalities could put on. So what that would be is, in fact, it decided at this town meeting that they wanted to charge a 1% tax, everything you bought at the stores in town, restaurants in town, the tax would go to the town, and then the town meeting would decide how to spend that money. Luckily, that was big, big town. We had five of those in the last term. They keep trying, but it's unconstitutional for anybody but the legislature to tax, so that one got beaten. There was a tax on anybody that made over $200,000. Their income tax would go from 7.5% to 10%. That got beaten. There was a $2 a pack cigarette tax after we put, I think it was $1.50 on in the last legislature, that we're going to add another $2, and that got beaten. There was a gas tax that was going to be 3% per year over the next three years, and we've all seen where the gas prices have gone. That's got beaten. I believe most of these would have been vetoed because our governor had said when she was running that there would be no new taxes, and then she also said it again when she did her supplemental budget. So I was surprised that they were even put before us because it was pretty clear that she didn't want any new taxes. It's been quite a ride. We did all of our committee meetings by Zoom, as everybody else has, and it's completely different, especially for the new legislators that came in. It is a big part of being a legislator is to actually meeting with the people that have the bills and have the concerns so you know what they're looking for. And that was lost until the last two weeks when we were actually back in the House. Pretty expensive to go into the civic center. We each had a six-foot table with a tablecloth. They had to buy a communication system for us, a voting system for us, so it got very expensive when we only met up there twice. But luckily, we're back in the House, and everything's going well. So we go back on the 30th, go veto day. I suggest you look and see what bills there are, and if you have any concerns about any bill that's passed the House and the Senate, then you send the letter to the governor. She has the final say, and then we have to decide whether we're going to override her veto or not. Two laws that really scare me, they have decriminalized drugs all the way up to fentanyl. If you get caught with drugs, you get a $100 fine. If you released a balloon at a party, you get a $500 fine. So there are some really upsetting bills up there this year, and I suggest that if you have any concerns, whatever area you work in or live in, then you look at them and send a message to your governor. Again, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. I think Ted, you're around for all if you have any questions for him. Also wanted to introduce to the back our resident deputy, Greg Sevigny. Greg, raise your hand. Yell at him if you have any issues. Also, also apparently related, Jason Sevigny, raise your hand. Jason, sorry, incoming COVID officer, is correct? So just in relation, apparently, the 70s are here. Okay, I think we've covered all of that. So important for moving forward is this blue card. This is your ticket to voting today. Want to make sure that people who are voting are in the chairs. People who are non-resident and not voting can be in the balcony, because when it comes time to counting votes, okay, so the guys who are, who are voters, thanks, Greg, who are voters and are in the balcony, we probably try to find a chair, so we make sure that you're seated. Okay. There is, in your packet, you've got a pile of small pieces of paper because we have to go through a process of electing committee members. Don't forget, we missed a town meeting, so we did not get to update our finance committee, our various committees. So in the packet is a whole bunch of different colored things which would allow us in the normal course of events to go through making nominations. Now, the Warren Finance Committee is particularly difficult because apparently we have a lot of people interested in it. So unless there's objection, we're going to essentially look for nominations for both years. Warren Finance Committee, and we're going to take, we're going to vote using these pieces of paper. Not in the format, but we're using these pieces of paper. If you're going to vote, we're up to eight.
Can I just say, I wanted to make sure it's clear in the vote. Okay, so there's a total of eight seats available on the Warren Finance, and because we have at least 10 that I'm aware of, people that are interested, we're trying to find a way to put it together and vote on it as one, but all of the voters need to understand it, and they need to agree with it. So the idea is that we are going to take the names of everybody interested in the Warren Finance. You have a big piece of paper that says three members on it. You have a purple one that says three members on it, and then you have two, an orange and a blue to say one alternate. The idea is that we take all of the names from the floor. On the one that says three, you can put three names. On the second one that says three, you can put three names. On the ones that say one, even though there is more than one line, you can only put one. So you can vote for a total of eight people. They have to be different people on the same slip. So if you write Richard Nass on all three, Richard's only going to get one. Once we do that, and everybody votes, then we're going to take the top three names and give them the three-year terms.
Top three vote, get the people with the highest vote for them.
The next three will get the one-year term. The next one will get the alternate for two years. And the last one will get the alternate for one year, and then anybody after that will not be elected committee. But what you need to understand and keep in mind is that the two that say one alternate member, we're only going to count the first name you put on that slip. So if you want to count, you know, keep that in mind, because we would have no way of knowing if Ted filled out, if three, three, and then put three names on the other two. So if you want to vote, use your three slips first, but you can vote for up to eight people. Does that make sense?
Any questions?
The other idea is that we do them one at a time, but we have to stop and count because we need to see who gets the first three so that they could be re-nominated if, you know, if they didn't make the first round.
Okay, so let's go over, so tell me, pink slip. Questions, questions? Yes, yes, sir.
Did I understand correctly that you're saying that a voter cannot vote for the same person on a two-year term, a one-year term, and so forth?
If you put the same name right, you put the same, you may object to this, that's why.
If I'm correct in what you're saying, I would object to that.
Then that is the downside of this. The upside is, we're essentially trying to get this.
So we can certainly go through them one at a time, and now that I think about it aloud, it's probably better, I guess, than we do initially because we'll use Richard. So if Richard fills out all three, we're going to have no way of knowing if Richard put, I mean, if Ted put Richard on all three of his ballots, definitely.
Kind of the key element here is that these four color codings and what the titles say are irrelevant in this scheme, right? Because this is all collective. So whoever gets the most votes gets the, we'll call it the best ranking, as in a full-time member for a two-year term, and then here, et cetera.
So there appears to be objections, so we're going to go back to what we normally do. Dennis, we have questions. Dennis?
Mr. Moderator. So this will be two separate votes. One for, three members for one year, and then there'll be a vote for the alternate for one year.
Yes.
Two separate votes.
Yeah, so there's going to be four votes.
Four votes.
Yes.
But you're only going to do the first part of five first. Choose three members of the one at a time for a one-year term.
Yeah. So and again, luckily, some of this stuff does pertain, so if you put the same name down more than once, bullet voting, they call it, that is not going to count that. So it's only going to be one vote for that person. Okay, so putting multiple, the same name down more than once does not get you anything. Okay?
Just regarding what you said, we're sticking to the original plan.
Original plan.
We will have to stop and count them because you'll need to know who didn't make the first cut so that you can re-nominate them the next time, so make good time to this.
Okay, so this is just procedure. We're still tied by procedure. I want to make sure we cover the, what happened in the election on Tuesday. We didn't cover that yet, so let me just, this, we're talking about Articles 1 through 4 here, okay? So for selectmen, overseers of the floor, a three-year term. Ed Walsh got 200 votes, and there were 49 blanks. Article 2, excuse me, Article 3, school committee, for a three-year term. Christina J. Gardner got 194, Mary Stanton got 191, and there were 113 blanks. Article 2, excuse me, Article 4, is the road commissioner, for a three-year term. District 2, Abd Oliver, 173, Dennis Walsh, the third, 74, two blanks. Any questions on the results of the election? All right, so now we're now open, now we're on Article 5, which is three members of the Warren Finance Committee for a one-year term because of COVID, and one alternate member for a two-year term. So this is going to require two votes. So we're now taking, yeah, we're now taking nominations for three members of the Warren Finance Committee for a one-year term. So you have to stand up so we can hear the names. We're not going to force you to come to the mic. Dennis?
Joyce Bashy.
Joyce Bashy, yes. Charlie?
If we're ranking this two-year than one-year, why not do the two-year term first for another vote, and then do the COVID?
We would have to change the order of the order.
Or we could swap to Article numbers, that's all.
We could, yeah. Do you, if you want to make that motion to take Article out of motion, out of order?
Correct, make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, take the Article. Charlie, your proposal is to do Article 6 first, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the motion is to take Article 6 first, which would be the purple, the purple sheet, that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of taking an Article out of order, please raise your blue cards. If you have hands down, those opposed. Okay, Art, the motion to take an Article out of order is approved. Okay, so now we're talking about Article 6. The motion is to choose three members of the Warren Finance Committee for a two-year term, and one alternate member for a two-year term. We're talking now just about the three members of the Warren Finance Committee for a two-year term. Are there nominations? Dennis?
Joyce Bashy.
Joyce Bashy's been nominated. Yes, sir?
Thomas McGurty.
Thomas McGurty?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Dennis Long. Wait a minute, let's go to Dennis. Dennis? No, just want to make sure.
Mr. Dennis Long Senior, correct?
Senior, okay. Additional, yes, sir? Roland Waterhouse. Yes, Joe?
Tom Ward.
Tom Ward, he doesn't want to be on.
Okay, Tom Ward declines. Other nominations, yes, Dan?
Shailin Brogro.
Say that again, please.
Shailin Brogro.
Shailin Brogro. Yes.
Tucker Pearson.
Tucker Pearson. Other nominations, Elise?
Virginia Shea.
Virginia Shea. Yes, sir?
Leslie Berlin.
Leslie Berlin. Elise?
Chris Whitman.
Chris Whitman. Other nominations? Elise?
Casino Weller.
Okay, Casino Weller. Additional nominations, Elise?
Jim Driscoll.
Jim Driscoll. Yes?
Dee Jordan.
Dee Jordan.
Oh, Bridget, sorry, yeah.
Dee Richard has declined, so her name will not be up there. Any other nominations?
Check your nominations, make sure we got them on the board. Feel free to come up and look around, you have enough time, just please come up and place it on the page.
Okay, man clerk, which, we're talking about the purple paper.
Three members of one package for two years.
I lost my package. Okay, so when you're done, Elias, yes?
Yes. Would it be helpful to the chair as well as to those here to have the candidates speak and at least discuss their qualifications?
Well, could we, how about if we ask them to identify themselves? Is that all right? No, you don't, you want some, somebody, okay. How many of the candidates are here? So the, the suggestion is we allow the candidates to identify themselves and speak, identify their qualifications. I, you know, I suppose it's, it's just going to prolong things. You're okay with that? Okay. You want to read them off?
Joyce Bashy.
Joyce, do you want to say something, Joyce? Come up here to the mic, or you can speak from the chair. Go ahead. Go to the mic.
I've lived in town 22 years. Excuse me. Before coming here, my background was, I was a business owner. I did my own books, actually, at that time. After I retired from that, I worked with the Massachusetts Water Cultural Society. I was their political chairman, worked out of their legends as political chairman. That's sort of my background. Did a lot of volunteer work there, and I came to Acton. I was first on the Volunteer Ambulance Association and ran the bingo. From then, I was a trustee at the library, and then for nearly five years, I was on the ladies position there, was chairman. Since then, I've been on the capital improvement, which is a brand-new committee, saying what we're going to need in the future. I think Acton needs a lot of people to be involved in a lot of things. We're a very small town. We know we have a big heart, but we're growing, and I'd like to be part of that, and I would appreciate your votes. Thank you.
Thanks, Joyce. Listen, I can't see the boards.
Tom McGurty.
Tom?
If I may suggest, if you've had candidates come out and stand in the line and you're not able to wait for each person?
Perfect. Great suggestions. So all the candidates can move in this direction. Tom Ward, you have a question? Okay? Okay. So if all the candidates who are here, come on up front, that will save us some time. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tom McGurty. I've owned a home on West Shore Drive for about 19 years now. I recently retired from Tuch University, where I was the CFO for 25 years, and have had 45 years of experience in higher education finance. I moved permanently to Maine. In the last year and a half, I've lived on West Shore Drive with my wife Kathleen. My son Aaron owns a home on Treasure Island as well, and I have one other daughter and four grandchildren. Having recently moved to Acton in Maine, I thought this would be a great time for me to be able to get involved in the community and to be able to provide what I've learned over the years, hopefully in a positive way for the town.
Thank you, thank you. Who's the next name? Dennis, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Most of you know who I am, and I've liked to talk a long time, so I'm not going to do that. I've lived in this town my whole life, and I have spent many years serving the town. My whole life, I've had quite a few times, I've been on the Warren Finance Committee. I think I enjoy it, and I think the knowledge that I have, past being on the planning board, zoning board, doing other things for the red department, I think I will do it with Charles, serving the people. And my position at the Warren Finance Committee, I've said many times that I'm accountable to the town leader. That's who I answer to, and that's who I represent.
Thank you. The next name?
Chris Whitman.
Chris?
I'm Chris Whitman, I've been in Acton for a couple of years now.
Well, Chris, turn the mic up a little bit.
Then Dennis loves the mic, it's quiet. Was on the red board, been in and out of Acton for 30 years.
Thanks, Chris. Who's the next name?
Casino Weller, is not here. Education against students in the city, who lives on 49, fairly new cap. Tucker Pearson, is not here, but both of his parents are here. I don't know if either one of them wants to be on his cap. Tucker currently serves on Warren Finance. His family, John Brogro, is in town, all alike. And, oh, mom's there. Roland Waterhouse, yeah.
I'm glad you're playing, Roland Waterhouse. I'm currently on Warren Finance, my parents aspire. I've been on Warren Finance for, I don't know, six or seven years, I'm not sure which. I enjoy working on Warren Finance. I enjoy volunteering for the town. As Dennis said, my total responsibility is to the town. I don't have an expendable, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name?
Virginia Shea is not here. She is currently on Warren Finance as well. She was in Eagles' race, and she is the election board as well, so you may see her at the election. Sorry, Shailin Brogro. Shailin is also not here. She did indicate she was interested. She also served as an election clerk, I mean, I'm very sad, I promise you, I don't know that well. But he got family, so he's here now. Virginia's profile, Leslie is here. Leslie Berlin.
Hi, I'm Leslie Berlin. I've been a resident of Acton for about seven years. We have been property owners since 2003. I do have a degree in accounting and finance. I worked a number of years at Ford Credit in their collection division. I have also volunteered in town on the planning board, spent six years on the planning board. I'm on the red committee, and I volunteered a good number of hours for the town. I'd like to continue to do that. I believe that I have a lot to give to the townspeople, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Other names?
My last name is Jim Driscoll, who's your current municipal officer, and also serves as a local manager.
Thank you. Okay, purple sheet, three names, or less if you want. No duplicates, that doesn't help you to put the name on, same name twice. When you're done, come on up front, bring your blue card with you. Your ballot doesn't go, Dennis, where's your blue card, Dennis? Blue card with you, please. Ballot does not go in the box, unless you have your blue card in your hand. All the votes in, everybody voting? Got some votes out yet? Are we waiting for votes? Okay. Last call, all the votes in on Warren Finance Committee for one year, three-year terms, excuse me. So we're counting votes now, so now's a good time to visit Mary Grant people, if you want. We won't move forward until we know the results of this, so we know who's available for an alternate term. While we're doing this, let's talk about some articles coming up, and we have seven articles, everybody listening, hello, 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 for county votes. We have seven articles today where there's a motion, all from Warren Finance Committee, ought not to pass, on a motion that was developed by the selectmen. Moderator's going to rule a motion ought not to pass out of order because it's what they call a negative motion, which means that if you, that motion is on the floor for discussion, and you want to vote ought not to pass, you need to vote yes, which really is a no motion for the article itself. So yes means no, and no means yes. Moderators may suggest we don't do that because it confuses people. Okay, so when we get to those, I'll point those out, and we'll be operating from a motion ought to pass. If you don't agree that it ought to pass, you need to vote no. If we get enough no votes, it fails, has the same effect, basically. Okay, so negative motions are confusing to people. Okay, so negative motions are confusing to people. We're not doing those. There's a, yes, sir, question. We're talking about procedure now, so, yes, go ahead.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The Warren Finance Committee did not make the motion, they voted.
Okay.
That's not making a motion.
Well, they have a recommendation, I'm sorry, the board...
That's not a motion.
No.
So I'd like to view, playing the legal status that you're changing these things to a negative vote.
No, I'm not changing anything. I'm just saying that...
You what? You're saying that it's a negative?
No, I'm saying if we, if somebody makes a motion, because we're going to operate from whatever motion comes from the floor, if somebody makes a motion to adopt the Warren Finance Committee recommendation on this, on those seven articles, that means it ought not to pass. That's what the recommendation is, ought not to pass. That is a negative motion. In order to vote, if you vote yes on that, essentially you're voting to not pass the original motion. So yes means no, and no means yes. The recommendation is not to do that because it confuses people.
Yeah, confusion.
Okay, okay. When we get to that, we'll go over it again. I'm just trying to get everybody prepared, so. We're trying not to, not to get in a situation where yes means no and no means yes. I mean, most people can figure it out, but in the end, people are sitting there wondering what we just did. We're not going to go there, okay? Ted is laughing because this happens to him every day up in the legislature. Okay, so we're still counting. There is another motion coming up on one of the zoning ordinances, again, a recommendation from the Warren Finance Committee to table, table a motion that was to adopt a zoning ordinance. And again, tabling motions in town meeting, the recommendation is not to do that because tabling, when you come to town meeting, the assumption is we're going to take action on all the articles that are there, not do nothing, not something, tabling. So again, we're going to operate on the basis of some kind of a positive motion, and if you don't like it, you're on the other side of this, and the selectmen are also on the other side of this. So when we get to that, if you want to vote no, because you agree with the no side of things, then you vote no. And that will probably be a motion on that. So tabling and negative motions in town meeting are discouraged, let's put it that way. So we're going to try to make sure that people understand. I see some people feel shaking their heads. Okay. Still counting. Charlie, you have a question?
Is there a reason why Ed Bolte is not here?
He's at a funeral.
The selectmen, I understand he's at a funeral.
Okay.
Family, friend, firefighter that he grew up with all of his life, so.
Top three, we'll erase their names. So top three is Tom, Joyce, and Dennis. We'll erase those names and one for the next one.
The next one is the orange?
Well, no, it is the, based on, well, he took the orange, so I can choose after.
So the next, the next orange is the orange sheet. And it's to choose one alternate member of the Warren Finance Committee for a two-year term. Are there any questions so far about where we're going? So we are erasing the three that got elected. Is there any other nominations that would be for this alternate member of the Warren Finance Committee for a two-year term? Are there additional nominations?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Dennis?
Joe Rumah.
Joe Rumah. Alternate member of Warren Finance Committee for a two-year term. Other nominations, yes, sir?
I have a nomination, but would it be appropriate to do the three members for the two-year term, or the one-year term, first, and then the other?
Well, the gentleman, you guys voted to move that article ahead.
Yes, and this article basically has these two positions in the same article, so we did that. So you're now proposing that, I don't know, that we, once we move the articles, the assumption is we're going to deal with it. I understand what you're trying to do, but...
Right, you're, you said us electing a permanent, you're electing an alternate first, which doesn't make sense.
Yeah, yeah. Charlie?
The earlier motion was to move Article Six ahead of the other articles.
Yeah, right, which is what we did.
Not to go and just sort of swap five. So to keep the logic correct would be to follow what he just said to the...
I, I understand that, but we swapped articles in the article...
No, no, what we did was we moved Article Six out of order.
Right.
That was the motion.
Yeah.
We did that.
Yeah.
So now we're going to have another motion to move whatever...
No, we haven't, we haven't finished with Six yet.
Okay.
That's my, that's the problem, okay? Yeah, I don't, it's getting too confusing now. Let's just finish this. Why is, I see your hand going up, yes?
Point of order, if we vote for, how many, vote for?
One.
That takes that person out, and whoever wins that seat cannot then serve as a...
That's correct.
...member as a one-year term. I think that's what that gentleman would say.
And that's, that is correct, and I wish there was some way we could fix that, but the article is what it is, okay? Yes?
It seems to be that another way to address this is to start a clean slate for the alternate position, and then if people don't want to put someone on as an alternate, because they don't want them to vote as a permanent, so...
Okay. So we're starting with a clean slate for alternate. Except for, yeah, there's one addition, that's Joe Rumah, the new nomination for alternate. See if I'm interpreting this correct.
Right.
So you have a clean slate. If you put a name on there who you want to be a permanent member, which will be the next one up for a one-year term, then you shouldn't put that person's name down, I think that's what you're saying. That's a possibility. Yeah, we're kind of stuck now. We've got to finish this article, you can't parcel these articles up pieces. Okay? All right, so we have nominations for alternate. Other nominations for alternate? Elise? Leslie Berlin?
Chris Whitman?
Chris Whitman? Our nominations for alternate members for a two-year term. Joyce?
Tucker Pearson.
Tucker Pearson, alternate. Again, if any one of these people is not elected for this alternate, they're also available for the next ballot, which is full member, one year. There's all, there's all kinds of issues here. Patty, you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I would just like to speak. I know that I have heard and say that you'd like to take a full-time position. I don't believe you want the alternate.
This is, are we talking about Tucker now?
Yes.
Okay. So you're going to, on his behalf, withdraw his name? Patty? Okay, so Tucker's name is, was his, was his name on there?
Tucker Pearson, yes.
So it's off now? Yes, ma'am? Other non, yes?
What about Gazino Weller?
Okay, so some of these people have, we've already heard from Joe, we have not heard from, but Joe, do you want to say anything on your, no? Okay. You must. Other questions or comments? Additional none? Seeing none. We're now talking about the orange sheet of paper, in which you should put one name. You put more than one name, especially if it's the same, if you put more than one name, I don't know what we're going to do, we can't do...
Count the first one.
Okay, we're going to count the first one. Okay? One name. When you've got that done, bring it out, your blue sheet up to the front here. Everybody voted for this alternate position. This comment was one. All votes are in. Last call on votes for this alternate position. Patty, you have one. All votes are in. Okay, we're now counting. I tell you what, if we're going to move this law... Look for a motion from Dennis. Dennis is going to make, Dennis is going to make a motion that we move to the zoning articles. That would be, the first one would be Article Ten. So I'm taking an article out of order, Dennis.
I, I make a motion, we move to Article Ten, and when the count is done on this, we'll go back to the next one.
Is there a second? It's sort of applies to two-thirds of us to take an article, it's the movement seconded. Okay, all those in favor of taking Article Ten out of order, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? Looks like our, the motion to take an article out of order is passed. Okay, so I'm going to, while we're counting, we're going to Article Ten. I want to talk about these zoning articles. The page, this Article Ten starts on page two, and then it prevents, presents all of the detail that goes with zoning changes. It ends towards the bottom of page three, and in between you see these terms, Article Three, Article Two, that is not an article in front of town meeting, those are zoning, zoning terms, I guess. So we are looking at an article that starts on page two, up the middle of the page, and goes to, or the bottom of page three. Is there a motion on Article Ten? Dennis?
I press stop then. I make a motion to waive the reading on that.
Okay, thank you. This is objection, we're going to waive the reading on this article and probably most of the other, any objection to that? If we are, if I was to read it, you'll all be confused. Okay, we're good, then we're not going to read it. Dennis?
So I'll make a motion to approve Article Ten as written.
It's been moved, is there a second? Second by Chris Whitman, it's been moved and second to approve Article Ten as written. Dennis, you want to talk to it?
I would rather Gavin came up to me.
Okay, Gavin, who's on the planning board, is going to just, instead of the reading, we're just going to do a brief explanation of what this does. Gavin, are you up?
Gavin Maloney, I'm on the vice chairman of the planning board, just quickly, this article...
Yeah, get a little closer to the...
Just fills a, a hole in the zoning ordinance where we didn't have anything to do with storage buildings in the zoning ordinance. We do have a few of these structures in town right now, but we anticipate that being more in the future, and just want to make them basically as permitted views right now. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance about them. And we have definitely, if you're a storage building, a building or group of buildings containing separate individual private storage spaces of various sizes, not exceeding five thousand square feet, total floor area per building, available for lease or rent for varying areas in the town. So I would assume everyone's familiar with these types of structures. If you have any more questions, I'd be happy to...
Other questions or comments on Article Ten? Charlie, you got to, if you're going to talk, you got to come up here, so if you're... So if you're, you're interested in this and want some more information, you can line up right up here at the mic so everybody can hear you. Charlie, you're up.
All I would like is clarification. I understand this is an insertion in the ordinance, but later on, you strike out the following letters or sub, sub-power portions of the article. And the one you have, both K struck out and J, and then you go farther down, there's M and L, and, and, and M. I just want some clarification. What are you actually going to be labeling each one of these follow-ups that you're displacing?
It appears that all you're doing here is just moving everybody down on that.
Right. Now you're striking out, part of the article is you're actually striking out that letter identified.
Yep, there's another letter printed there.
Right, and that's struck out also. If you look at the one for childcare facilities, both the M and the L, both struck out.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Yeah, both struck out. And then if you go below that, the one for facilities not listed above, having less than blah, blah, blah. Both the N and the M are struck out.
Boy, not mine. I don't see that striking.
Can I just pick this up?
I see it in shadow. I, I see it in shadow on facilities versus-
Well, that's, that's the change. That's the portion that's being changed.
Okay, all right, I guess I see it. Gavin?
Yeah.
Um, I'd have to say that, um, the intent of the board was to, like Richard said, insert storage buildings, make it I, and then resultingly-
Shit all the ones down. I understand what the intent was. But that's not what the article has written.
True, and I, I can't really comment on why some of the letters are both struck out. I mean, you can look at the last one, facilities, oh, is not struck out, and it's.
I understand, but-
They're voting on it as written. Well, I would say that's up to the town meeting to decide if they mind this clerical error or not. Honestly, I didn't-
Okay, let's, let's propose an amendment. Amendment? I mean, we're not supposed to amend zoning articles because they've already had a public hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I don't know what to do with this one. Okay, so we can't amend them. Gavin has explained the thing. What it would do is not their intention to remove all of these other items. It was just a intention to move them down one peg, basically.
And we surely would give them the new letter. It's not like we would amend the zoning ordinance charter without letters on it. Of course, that may be a conflict with the town meeting, but I feel like that is what will happen because that is the intent of the article.
So you need to decide when we get to, when we're done with the debate on this, you need to decide whether this is enough of a concern. It can be fixed later, I suppose, or is enough of a concern that you want to vote against it and then have to come back with the correct version at the next town meeting or a special town meeting? That's where we're at. We can't change them today because they've already had a public hearing. Dennis?
I am, uh, no longer on the planning board, but, um, I, I know we can't amend these, but I am sure, uh, the, the intent, as Gavin explained, was to address storage units, um, because we have nothing that covers what, what they want to do. Uh, and I'm sure the planning board would, uh, we have a special town meeting or another town meeting, um, make these adjustments and the concerns. Uh, because every year there's adjustments of those zoning ordinance and, um, I would, I would ask that the townspeople pass this.
Other card questions or comments on Article 10? Motion is to adopt the article as written. Bob?
I'm, I'm unclear as to what's going to be changed or what's going to be amended, or what's going to be changed as far as what's written on the article. Um, so therefore, I think that this should be tabled. I think a motion should be made to table this.
No, we're not.
And, and have it corrected so that the townspeople can see what the article actually is, is going to do. And, um, have a special town meeting to vote on.
Okay.
I'd like to make that motion. I want to make a motion to table-
No, not for the table. We're going to take action.
I would like, I would like to make a motion.
We already have a motion in front of us now. Okay? So if you want to, if we can't amend, we're stuck, basically. So we got other, Joyce, words? Joyce?
Um, I was actually on the planning board. A lot of this work was done. And what I'm looking at is a, some type of error. However, Brad, town meeting, we're voting on this article as written. Even though I'm in favor of the article correctly, I have to vote no, because this is not the intent of the article. And it can come up after my next town meeting or special town meeting.
Additional questions or comments? Ted?
Yeah, I agree. I was just going to say that if you vote this in, you're voting it in as written. If you vote it down and go back, it's not an emergency. So it gives you a time, it gives the planning board time to fix it and then come back to us at the next meeting. So that is my recommendation.
Other questions or comments on Article 10? The motion is to adopt the articles written. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your blue card. It's down. Those opposed? Okay, Article 10 does not, is not approved. Okay, we're going back to the election for an alternate member. For two years. So it looks like Joe Rumah had the most votes, and so he's the alternate, uh, on the warrant finance committee for two years. Now we're going to go back and continue our movement. Unless there's objection, we're going to keep going back to do these elections. The next election is, um, okay, now we're talking about the pink, the pink sheet, which says, choose three members of the warrant finance committee for a one-year term. We actually have to switch the articles, okay, just so we know. We're now back to Article Five. Okay, everybody's on Article Five. Effectuate that. We're at the pink one, and we're now taking nominations for warrant finance committee for a one-year term because of COVID. Other nominations? Dennis?
Roll and Waterhouse.
Roll and Waterhouse.
Yes, Tucker Pearson.
Tucker Pearson is the nominee. I'm going to go. Leslie Berlin. I'm going to go with Nancy. You get, okay, yes, ma'am? Chris Whitman, and then Elise? Are we going too fast? Okay. Elise? Virginia Shea? Elise, still? Gazino Weller. Other nominations for a one-year term on the warrant finance committee? Can you read the, uh?
Roll and Waterhouse, Tucker Pearson, the letter's written, Gazino Shea, Chris Whitman, and Gazino Weller.
I don't see here any new names, so is there any need for presentations? Anybody want to hear a presentation again for a one-year term? Seeing none? Oops. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. What's that? Jim Driscoll? Okay, thank you. Again, I don't see any new names on there. Yes? Yes, you can still just vote for one. You can vote for up to three. Doesn't do you any good to put the same name down more than once. Okay? You could vote for one, or two, or three. Are there any other questions about Article Five? Okay, once you get your ballot, ready your slip and your ballot up to the front? Okay, voting, voting for warrant finance committee for one-year term. Last call for warrant, warrant finance committee. Here we go. Warrant finance committee for a one-year term. Last call for warrant finance committee for a one-year term. All the votes in? Okay, voting is closed on that. Counting now. Let's go to Article 11. Again, see if the town will vote to adopt the following changes to the town of Atkins zoning ordinance as related to structures over water. Yeah, unless there's objection, I'm not going to read it. And Dennis, make a motion.
Uh, I made a motion. Do you want me to make a motion not to read it? You're just not going to read it?
No, we're not going to read it unless somebody objects.
Uh, yeah, I have no objection to that. Uh, I, I made a motion to, uh, approve Article 11 as written.
It's been moved. Is there a second? The move is seconded to adopt Article 11 as written. Okay, uh-
I can, I can do this one.
Okay.
Gavin really wants it.
So we're just going to get a brief explanation of this. Now, just so everybody knows, again, Article 11 starts on page three, goes all the way over to almost the bottom of page five. And don't be distracted by the term Article One, Two. Those are zoning ordinance terms. Okay? Go ahead, Dennis.
What this does, uh, in our ordinance now, all docks need to be permitted. And what this does is it deletes the temporary docks. So you don't need, uh, permits for them. And the only ones you need are the permanent docks.
Other questions or comments on Article 11? Motion is to adopt the article as written. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none? All those in- Yes? Come on up here. Come on up here. We all want to hear you. No, we're not voting this time. I know this is oppressive, but we have a- Everybody wants to be able to hear, so that's the important. Are they, anybody else that wants to comment, these to come up too? Yes, ma'am? You're going to talk to me. You're going to talk to me.
Where are permanent docks right now?
Okay, the question is, where are permanent docks?
They're, they're around the lake. The permanent dock is one that gets fastened to the ground or a tree. It's, it's permanently fastened. They're, all the lakes have them. Great East Lake. Where on Great East? I would say most of the places on Great East.
That's a good question. The question is, is a permanent dock mean it's left in the water? Does anybody, I guess we're talking about what the definition of permanent dock is.
A permanent dock is attached to the shore.
Okay.
That's considered a permanent dock.
It has nothing to do with, that's left in during the winter?
No.
Okay.
A temporary dock is one that goes in and out.
All right. Mary. Questions for Mary? Do you have questions? Come on up.
Well, again, if you go on with the typo, J is all struck out but not shaded. So I assume on page five.
Page five? So we're talking about?
I mean, I assume that meant it was supposed to be struck out, but it's not shaded like the above ones that are taken out? Just wondering.
Yeah, that's, that's, so it appears the definition is, uh, makes, it's not shaded, but it is, the line goes through it. So again, that is a cler, it looks like a clerical error, but we're waiting to, it's a beauty to decide. Yes, sir?
It seems to me that the article hinges on the definition.
Question, closer to the mic.
The definition of permanent, that definition ought to be a part of the article.
Okay? Charlie?
The only comment I have about this, it's a nice idea, but it completely removes the code enforcement officer with the exception of that first paragraph, which really doesn't say anything. You're going and you're removing all the criteria or consideration for erosion control and also access for whatever sort of media you have to walk and get to this war for dock or et cetera. So this should not pass.
Other questions or comments on Article 11? Yes?
Um, I believe that they're regulated by the state, and I think that was the reason for this.
Okay. So the question is, are they regulated by the state? And I think they are. Bob?
Yeah, I thought they were regulated by the state too. When I was doing years to my permanent dock, it's a, you know, like the cement foundation down on the lake. Um, I had to get, at the time, uh, the CEO, and he directed me to the state, you know, to get permanent. And I had to get permanent to do any work there.
So what, does that leave, where does that leave you on this article? Do you want to express?
I had to say, no, because it's already, it's already there.
Okay. Other questions or comments on Article 11? Dennis?
Um, people do what you will, but I will tell you that it requires a permit and a zoning ordinance for a dock. And we, what we want to do is to eliminate the temporary docks. And it's all the gold, the guy comes out and you're in violation. It's on you.
Dennis?
Yes?
Why do you want to give her that temporary dock? Are you talking about the ones you put in and out every year?
Yeah, we don't want to have to have a permanent for that.
Oh, okay, that's what you're saying.
That was a-
The dock, it's a permanent dock.
I mean, kick that out, throw it to you on. It's up to you guys, obviously.
Additional comments or questions? See Joyce, this coming up? Go ahead, or any?
Uh, I'd just like clarification. Is raised a dock a permanent dock or a temporary dock? Raised a dock is one that in the end of the year, you go around the lake, you see them, they're raised up because of that little bit of paint or that, that's a little cement block. Is that considered permanent?
Good question, Dennis. Can you answer that?
Anything that's attached to a property, whether it's a tree or the ground, uh, in what honey's talking about, they are considered permanent docks.
So a chain around a dock to a tree on the shore makes it a permanent dock? Okay. Okay.
Yes? Um, yeah, I voted for this, I recommended this, but with some of the special I have here, I do think this is a little vague. Um, it's, it's got something here that actually says when it says secure, everybody's secure, it's a dock now. You don't want the dock floating away. Um, this is too vague, I believe, in the day and of day.
And then we need the definition in there. The definition, that's why we, it's sort of like people are asking that question.
So Mike, Mike, Mike Devers is currently our assistant CEO, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, I'm going to disagree with you, just go on. A temporary dock is a seasonal dock where you put it in and, and it comes out at the end of the season. A permanent dock would be something with, uh, pilings or gears or a grip, something that is permanently in the water year round.
Is that your understanding of the definition that's inherent in this?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, as, as written, I believe this ordinance should, uh, this article should pass.
Thank you, don't go anywhere. Joyce?
In, in everything here, under case struck out of sea, is there new permanent structures or expansions thereof, projecting into an overbody water, shall require a permit from Department of Natural Protection, shown to Natural Restore Protection Act 381 RSA 748C. Sometimes permits are required from the Army Corps of Engineers if it's in navigable water. I don't think we have any navigable water docks. But they have nothing to do with the dock and then the call in, just cleaning up the, what's in our ordinance, but that last comment in there really says it all. Where you need...
Is there a definition? You know, the term, that if they call and say, what is a permanent dock? They'll get what they...
If they, if they get a question on what is a permanent dock, if they will be told if anything doesn't attach to land.
So, if you have, so, the problem we have here is, I listened to Mr. Devers explaining, pylon, concrete, it's that, you take a dock, you see an old dog, that's secured on a hinge, that bull's getting out of the lake, is that permanent?
Now I have a different opinion.
Okay, that's, that's the problem with that. But unfortunately, we, we have something, we have, there's something here that says exactly whether or not it is or not. If we do that, it's too vague, it's too vague. We can't amend it, so we have to, we have to dock pass this, and then when we go back to the next meeting, we can do that.
Additional comments or questions on Article 11?
Bernard Broder, I, I would encourage people to vote against this not to pass right now because, uh, some of the reasons are excited, and I could be right or wrong, but it seems to me that, uh, striking the language in item J strikes, that doesn't differentiate permanent from temporary. So we're striking, uh, specifications as to the docks, and while we may all know that, uh, that should have been shaded, but wasn't, if we, if we vote things in based on what we all knew or thought, but isn't there, not done correctly, then we have to damn still press slow. You know, we, we just voted on similar items. It's unfortunate, uh, I think that, uh, again, it's unfortunate, I'm not saying this to be critical of anyone, but I think we need to have better proofreading and editing before things come before us. I don't know what the current process is, but it clearly needs to be improved. So I would encourage people to vote against this.
Thank you, other additional comments or questions on Article 11? See none, the motion is to adopt Article 11 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your blue cards. Yes, down, those opposed. Article 11 does not pass, is not approved. We're back to Article 5.
The three one-year members elected are Rollin Waterhouse, Leslie Merlin, and Tucker Pearson.
Everybody swear on that one?
Three one-year members of Warren Finance, top three, Rollin Waterhouse, Leslie Merlin, and Tucker Pearson.
Okay, now we're still going to keep going on Article 5. So now we are now to the alternate member of Warren Finance Committee for a one-year term, that is the blue sheet. Okay, so now we're, are we ready? Ready for nominations for an alternate member of Warren Finance Committee for a one-year term due to COVID? Other nominations? Yeah, I'm sorry, at least? Yes, ma'am? Chris Whitman? I'm sorry.
Virginia Shea?
Virginia Shea? Others? Yes, Joyce? Who's that? Okay. Did you get that? Dennis, did you have one? Other nominations for the alternate for a one-year term? Yeah, we have one new name, Broder, did you, did you want to tell us who you are? If you do, that's fine, if not, Dennis just...
Excuse me, uh, Mr. Moderator, um, there was another lady, Jen, that said something on, what's up Matt, that she wanted to be on it?
Kelly wants to be on the fourth, maybe that's one of the names I have in my mind. Kelly is on there. The Zena Weller? The Zena Weller.
Yes, that's the one I had.
The one on the board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're looking for an opportunity to introduce yourself and say which member you'd like.
Hi, everybody, I'm Bernard Broder, um, I moved to Acton last fall, but I've had ties to your county since the 1980s. I recently accepted appointment, uh, as an alternate to the planning board, and as of July 1st, I'll be, um, an alternate member, or certain term, I should say. Um, I think that, why I would like to do this is I think that, it's a sad commentary in our society, but it's nevertheless true that what we do with our money, how it's appropriated and so forth, says what we value, and, um, that's the way it is. So, I want to be on task, seeing what we value, and that money is, or recommendations for, are appropriated accordingly. And then on the other side of that is accountability for where the money's going and how it's being spent, and answering the challenge of the taxpayers about that. So that's, that's my interest in finance. Thank you.
Thank you. No more nominations, uh, everybody's had a chance to talk, so now we're looking at the blue sheet. Again, one name. You put more than one name, it's the top name that counts. Come on up with your blue card, and then the blue card with you, and you talk through the ballot box.
Don't on camera.
Everybody voted? Everybody voted for alternate member for one-year term, Warren Finance Committee. Any other votes out there? Okay, we are counting now. Voting is closed for Temple. Let's go on to Article 12. Article 12 starts on the bottom of page 5. So we're all, it goes over to the bottom of page 6. To see if the town will vote to adopt the following amendments to the Town of Acton zoning ordinance in relation to timber harvesting. Dennis, motion?
I made a motion to adopt the article as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is to adopt the article as written, it's been moved in second. Yes, sir, questions or comments on Article 12? Well, we're going back, we took Articles 5 and 6 out of order, now we're going back to the regular order. Okay? No, I, I, 5 and 6, and then, uh, let me make sure. Okay, yes, I see what you're saying, so we have these election articles, other committees. So in a sense, you're correct. But I think we're, we're trying to maximize your time. Okay, let's do it this way, is there objection to taking a Article 12 out of order? See none, we're moving on Article 12. Dennis, Article 12. The motion is to adopt the articles written?
Exactly.
Okay. Are there questions and comments on Article 12, which is timber harvesting? Somebody want to explain what's happening? You've been doing this timber harvesting things for a while.
Uh, the state found a, another couple of words, or one word in there that they want taken out of a zoning, and that's, we missed it, so did they the last time, so...
Gavin, do you have a message about the big picture here?
Yes, we've been, uh, attempting to remove all conventions of timber harvesting from the zoning ordinance for a couple of years now. The main reason is that the State Forest Service, uh, wants us to be compliant with the state so that they will give us assistance. And we, we took a lot of herbicides a couple of years ago, um, and we just overlooked a couple of definitions. That's, that's pretty much it.
Okay, other questions or comments on Article 12, timber harvesting? Yes, ma'am?
We're removing the definition of timber harvesting, and we're changing the land use chart to remove silviculture, or as we have been acting, silviculture, which does not include timber harvest, commercial timber harvesting and land management growths. So we're, we're just taking that out. And then we're reserving, that letter E in the land use chart is reserved, so we can add something in there in the future as opposed to changing all the letter E, because there was going to be a lot more letter changing with this one, so we decided to avoid that.
Mary, questions or comments on Article 12?
No, I guess because, um, those dot, dot, dots are stars or whatever those are, that means there's a piece in there, a piece in there, a piece, 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 you know, right? So, the whole article isn't here, so it looks confusing, I think.
I think it's true, again, I'll go to Gavin, but the parts that are changed are printed here.
There are sections of the zoning ordinance in those areas that she is questioning with the dots here. Obviously, there was a beginning of zoning ordinance before this, you know what I mean? But then, we're not removing anything, everything that's being removed is highlighted and struck out here.
Other questions or comments, Charlie?
This is probably a question just for Gavin, but, uh, I'm curious whether or not there is other oversight or management by the town, reference to it somewhere else in land use ordinance. I would say, of course, uh, management activities will be dictated by state guidelines, and I don't see that as an addition for this to be taken out.
Good question.
At a previous town meeting, uh, two years ago, I believe it was, maybe three years ago, um, we, we do have, just a section that's, just a line that says timber harvesting will be the jurisdiction of the state, and then we have a reference to the state. State timber harvesting ordinance itself, so that people who are curious about what they can do with their property in terms of timber harvesting are referred to the state language.
Other questions or comments on Article 12? Motion is to adopt the article as written. Additional comments or questions? See none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your blue cards. Against that, those opposed. Article 12 is adopted as written. Okay, Mr. Broder is now the new, um, one-year alternate to the Warren Finance Committee. Are there questions or comments on that? Okay, so now we're going to go back to Article 7. Article 7. To choose two members of the town road committee for a two-year term, again, this is a similar pattern because of COVID. And the note here indicates who, who's been on it, who was elected, and what has happened here. So we're now open for nominations on Article 7 for two members of the town road committee for a two-year term. Leslie. Jay Ward, okay? Other nominations for the road committee? Town road committee? Joyce, do you have your hand up? Oh, Nancy? Leslie Merlin. Other nominations for town road committee? Joe Ruma. Other nominations for the town road committee for a two-year term? Leslie. Cindy Hart. Other nominations for road committee for a two-year term? See none, I think we're done. So again, road, road committee for a two-year, two-year term is the green, the dark green. Looking for two names. Did you put the same name twice? Second time's not going to count. Two names, dark green, two members of the town road committee for a two-year term. Anybody else want to vote on members of the town road committee? See none, voting is closed on that, we're counting. Let's go on to Article 13. I think this is the last of the zoning ordinances. This is one that I worked on initially. Recommendations on this in the Board of Selectmen are ought not to pass. Warren Finance Committee recommends to table the article. What I suggested earlier was tabling is a motion that is not what we came here to do. We came here to conduct business. Yes or no on these articles? Tabling kind of leaves them hanging out there. What's your motion?
I make a motion that we approve Article 13 as written.
Approve the article as written. So move in second that we approve Article 13 as written. Again, the recommendations from the Board of Selectmen are ought not to pass under two to one and one extension. Warren Finance Committee recommends table the article six to zero.
Good morning. Rick's next, Fire Chief. This is one of the articles that the committee asked me to come in and speak on. We also had the Fire Marshal's office down. So one of the things that's happening around the country, you've probably seen, watched news at all, is that these short-term rentals are popping up everywhere, and they're becoming problematic. Okay? So my whole approach to just about everything I do is make sure that town people who come to visit us are safe. And so this ordinance actually addresses, the change here, addresses a lot of the safety issues. If you read it, it's pretty basic stuff. You can't put them in a place that they can't get out of. They've got to have a fire extinguisher. They've got to have a list of phone numbers, 911, the fire station, police department, all that stuff. We're posted. And the whole permitting process is just so that we know where these places are so we can get in there, we can make sure they've got house numbers, and we can make sure that the fire department fires us, we can access them, the police department can access them. All right? We just want to have accountability so as people come to visit, they're safe. All right? Everybody knows that in their own home how to get out. If you come from away, you're staying in somebody else's home, those can be a little bit more hazardous. We all know what we're doing on the weekends, okay? Which might slow us down or make our brain process not work as well. So we just want to make sure people are safe. So that's the process that I'm looking for. There's the same recommendation from the Fire Marshal's office. This language is what they're recommending for everybody in the state to do. I agree with it, and the fire department's going to be a big part in making sure that we enforce this all under the guise of safety. That's all we're looking for.
Thank you. Other additions or comments on Article 13? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. So it would seem like a no-brainer. So I'm curious as to the position of the Board of Selectmen and Warren Finance. What are the downsides if we approve this today?
Selectmen care to comment on this? Trying to think back why we're getting it.
This kind of, you know, do we do this with long-term rentals? No, we don't. I kind of felt like it's kind of singling out why we're not doing all rentals like this. And also, the follow-up of who's going to deal with this? Who's going to, I mean, you just answered that question, but at the time, I didn't have that question answered, that who's going to do the follow-up? Who's going to go in and check off the levels and stuff?
Response from the Fire Chief. Hang on, Charlie, just a minute. Fire Chief?
Yeah, so the code form letter at the time, and I agreed on plan, that basically every spring we would go through all these. I would get my crews out, walk through them, we'd do the inspections, we'd make sure they're safe. And then they'd be good to go and be able to use them for the summers. Obviously, primarily what they're going to be using, what we should. These are Airbnbs, these are things that are weekend or week-longer, maybe up to two-week rentals. They're super common, and they're becoming problematic because they're so unregulated.
Additional comments or questions? Dave, you want to say anymore?
Yeah, I'll try to piggyback on what she was saying. I think that was pretty much the reason why it was, you're going to go after a certain group of people that are not, which whether or not you're going to be able to actually enforce it, because who's actually going to come up? You know, it's all the, that's why I voted against it. Because you know I'm going to be able to enforce it. You got people that have a place on the lake, okay, you know what, I'm going to rent out for a couple of weeks, just make my tax payment, but I might not, or I might. I just don't think it's enforceable. I mean, it's great.
I agree with you. So obviously, the private ones are hard or impossible to apply. We have handshake if you ask, but I can go on Airbnb, I can find all 100 places. Yeah. We're writing actin', and then just go, hey, you know, can we make sure this is safe? I'm not, I'm not an enforcement, law enforcement side. I'm saving. So that's all I want to do is make sure that. We're not, I'm not renting out a room in my basement with one crawl space door to get out of it because I can make a hundred bucks a month extra, you know?
I mean, but that's on the whole, that's on the whole order itself by doing that. And so.
And there's already stuff in there about long-term rentals, of inspection and enforcement that we already have to do anyway, that comes down to the state. But the short-term rental stuff is a gap that they haven't touched. And so we're trying to fill that gap, I put it this way.
I just feel that at the end of the day, you're only going to enforce a small majority of it. And whether or not that's worth your time running around after a little majority compared to everybody else doing it, it's like always stopping a couple speeders now and then.
Yep. And all I can do is make a recommendation to the town, and they tell me what to do with my time and the money that they lock me, so.
Okay, so go with Dennis, never go to Charlie, and then the other folks over there.
Dennis, the question was asked about the Warren Finance Committee's recommendation. The reason why, look, I agree 100% to what he's saying personally. The reason that was given at the Warren Finance Committee for tableing this was they felt it needed a lot more work. And rather than put something in that doesn't cover all the bases, I guess it's kind of like the first two ordinances that town people decided to send it back and have it reworked. And that was the rationale for the recommendation from the Warren Finance Committee.
Okay, additional comments? Charlie, next, and then over here.
My only comment is number six. Well, this is separate, but this is the big one that the planning board or whomever has to work on this. Not only should they be hardwired, but they should be interconnected on the smoke alarms. It's not written here. And that's.
Wait, 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 let's not have a discussion. Charlie, make a comment, and we'll go to, okay. Yes, sir. All right.
I rise in opposition to this article, and I don't think that due diligence has been done. The short-term rentals came about because they were destroying neighborhoods. In 2006, in Bahada, which has a big influx of people for Arcadia National Park, people found out that they could rent their apartments out to make a lot more money. In 2006, there was 185 short-term rentals. As of February of this year, 518 short-term rentals. That's 18% of the 2,795 dwelling units that have. What happens is in short-term rentals, and I have a good friend that has a condo over in Portland. His condo is the second floor of a three-story house. He rents his by a yearly lease at $2,800 a month. He could turn that around and rent that for $300 a night. Three days a week, he makes $900 bucks. Four weeks a month, he's making more money than he gets now. And that's what happened to these neighborhoods. These developers and people come in and bought the house, and saw it was a good investment. And there's an article in February's MMA magazine about a home lawyer, Christine Collyer. She writes on there, "Make sure you're not trying to regulate something that's not really a problem." Do you have documented complaints? How many? How many units do you have? Who are the owners? Realize that short-term rental ordinances, you are threatening some personal property rights. This article has excessive costs in there because people have to go and do renovations to their house. They have to have, might have to have an egress window to rent their house. It hurts the little guy. It hurts the little guy that's been here for years, that I spoke with a town employee the other day, and he was saying, it hurts the small guy because he built this little cabin out of two-by-fours years ago, and now he can't afford to pay the taxes. So he can't rent it out without going through all these costs. And as far a need for this, I found this website, it's called Airbnb, and they do data analytics on short-term rentals. And so I looked it up. Do you know how many active rentals they have on here? And they do Airbnb and Verbo together. Do you know how many, I'm on this page, I mean, rented in Acton? 18. There's nine on Grady's, one on Square, two on Horn, three on Mountains, and three on Luna. It says in here, this analytic thing, they grade the towns on their thing. It says there's not enough active rentals to calculate a grade for the town back on short-term rentals. I think this article is not in good stead.
Okay, the motion is to adopt the article as written. Additional comments? Yes, sir?
I'd like to speak in favor of enacting this, and my reasons are this. Those that are engaged in the businesses of short-term rentals, I mean, I don't think we have hotels and hotels and lodges enacting, but we do in, about in towns. And they're subject to regulation. And their businesses are affected, they're decreased when people can do the same type of business, short-term rental, without the regulation. I understand the concern about enforcement, but if something happens that runs contrary to the ordinance, then those people that violate it would be held accountable to it. This is a very lucrative business for those that do engage in it, and it does change you in points. And so, for example, if my neighbors decide to do Airbnb or other short-term rentals, and I have basically a new neighbor every night of the week or several nights a week, their behavior, in my opinion, will likely be different than someone who owns the property or someone who's there for the summer. Because if they're only there for two nights, those two nights are probably happy party nights. It does change things. I think that this is important. In terms of it not being perfect, other things can always be added later, this can be our baseline. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on Article 13? Yes, Dave?
Now, one thing that was brought up here, and Arnold made a very good point. Okay, we have these little cabins on the lake. I love it when I hear people complain around the lake that they're ripping down all the little places and putting up mansions, okay? Well, what this does, it takes away the little guy from renting his little cabin, you know, that doesn't have egress windows, that was built in 1930, okay? And it's only going to apply for these ones that were recently built, these places that made complaints, well, give it up. So it really puts it to the little guy. And it would not be fair for the guy next door to be able to do something because he's got a brand-new place and placing that through the family for 100 years, can't rent theirs out. It just doesn't make a lot of sense.
Additional comments or questions on Article 15? The motion is to adopt the articles written. Yes, ma'am?
Could someone please address what you mean by property owner or agent needs to be within one hour of all times when the unit is rented? So in other words, the person who has an Airbnb, if they go out of town because they're renting it, if they're out of town, they can't go, it's, I'm not clear on.
Do you live on the western side of Massachusetts, and you own a camp on Halls of Lake, then you're, we're just doing that? Is that in your favor?
Okay, let's let Gavin answer the question. He's doing the, go ahead, Gavin. So the question is, as you proposed, go ahead.
So the only reason we put the current agent in there is because a lot of these buildings are owned by people who live out of state, are not able to be there 24/7. Maybe they just come to Acton for a month and then rent their place the rest of the year, or whatever they do.
But the way it's worded, would it affect someone saying who did live in town? Who'd say, well, I'm going away for a week, I might as well rent my place? And.
You just have to have somebody respond. You have to, we have to. If somebody covered my house that I rent all you on vacation, because I need the cabin to it, the fire department, whatever, keep getting it.
Okay, additional comments or questions? Joyce, you're next.
Thank you. When, again, I was on the board when we worked on this, we had the state Fire Marshal, we had Ricky, and we all looked at this from a safety point of view. And yes, there are some things that are going to cost a little bit of money to some people, but if that doesn't burden the small owner, there's an additional outlay of cash. But in the end, if there's a fire, we're looking at this from a safety point of view. If there is a fire, we know there was a fire in town last night. If there's a fire, somebody doesn't get up. One of the things that we were told that really impressed me is using the station nightclub, station nightclub fighter. Not only did the aridians, who were the owners, get sued for any penny they'll ever make, their next-door neighbor in a home got sued because he complained of the noise level. And that noise level had the aridians go out in my home to cut down on the noise from Home Depot. So Home Depot got sued. And then they went around and they said, okay, why didn't the town do its job and sue the town? So that's where our thinking came from. We need protection. This is all about protection, protecting people. And that's really where it came from. Not going after the little guy, saying, hey, do business. They're saying, do business smart, and don't get in his business. In his business.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions from Leslie?
Leslie Merland. I was also on the board when this article or what was discussed. And I have some reservations about it because, I mean, I agree with the safety aspects that our Fire Chief has brought forward. But also, I mean, we're looking, this kind of short side, we're looking at the short-term people and their safety, but what about everyone else? I mean, I know a lot of people don't have egress windows in their homes. And I disagree that it would be a small expense to put them in. It'd be a huge expense. And 80 to 85% of our taxpayers is non-residents who rent, because some of them rent out their properties to pay their taxes. And I think that we should be looking at what's good for them also, and preserving their right to make a few dollars to help support the town in Acton.
Additional comments or questions? All right, I've got this gentleman behind me, go first. He was up here a couple of times. I don't want to discourage him from speaking.
Okay, I want to thank Joyce, I think you're in this. Thank you very much. That was actually kind of insightful in order to protect the town. I think that's kind of right. But I also see your point about the cost. When anybody who's legally renting their house would have to have insurance to cover that for rent. And insurance companies are going to require some of the things that you're talking about anyhow. So anybody who's doing it that isn't following in line with that is already dictating, again, to protect the town. Their insurance company's not going to protect them. And anybody who's going to sue them is going after everybody in that service. So if this is truly to protect the town, and one of my other questions, my only question was, the fees that you're getting on the permits, does that go to the fire department to cover the cost of doing the inspections? Because you guys are going to have some labor involved, right? Going out to inspect all these. Does that money get transferred over to the fire department?
And those are things that haven't even been addressed yet, I don't believe.
Not that, and you're also, you brought up a good point. So you're talking about whether or not, you know, we're talking about what Joyce was saying about, okay, the costs, this amount of liabilities. Your insurance company is the one that's going to be, the one that's going to take it. If you start looking at, well, whether or not we want to get involved, the second we get involved, that's when it becomes a liability. If we start talking about making sure every building in the town back is up, then they're going to sue us because we didn't make sure. I own a house I built in 1850. There's not a whole lot to cope with. Does that mean if my house burns, it's the town back to 12? No. But if you address the issue and say, we're going to make sure this happens, but we're not making it happen, that's when we become a liability. So by passing this through, we're creating a liability.
Additional comments on Article, all right, first, and then we'll go back over here.
Well, one of the things was, why so much safety about the 18 people? And what about the rest of the people that live in town that should have fire extinguishers in their home? They're not being addressed. But the other thing that, there's, the fees for this is all bad. There's no, we don't know. Are they going to charge $1,000 for the fee? Then you're going to have an inspection fee. Then you're going to have an inspection fee. You have to have a septic tank inspection. You have to have all these things, and it's, it's costly.
Additional comments or questions? Chief, did you want to address the question about the fees?
I am not going to answer the question about fees. That is, that's the committee's thing. I just want to give an example. So yesterday's fire was brought up. That was their secondary cottage on their property. It was not numbered, it was not labeled. We did not receive an address to respond to the fire. Now, it's very easy when it's on fire, right? You just go to the building, it's on fire. But if somebody was down in front of that cottage with a broken leg and said, "I have so-and-so's cottage," well, now I know most of you, I don't memorize everyone in the towns anywhere where they live. So that kind of stuff is going to stop that type of issue, okay? If, I'll pick on Ted, he's in front of me. Ted's coming up from away to rent a place. There's going to be a sign in there that says, "This is the address. This is who you call when you have a problem," all that. We're just trying to get all things that we see as problems out in the field. This isn't stuff that I've made up. This is stuff that we're starting to see with cottages, and then in the short-term rentals, it's a way that we can enforce that.
Other comments or questions? Yes, sir. Are you waiting here to talk?
Okay, let's go. Say something quickly about the G, um, your book, your G here, C is the application fee. This is not set by the planning board. We just said there is going to be a fee, as there is with most permits, and selective septic fee. So it's really kind of, kind of hands of the plan.
Other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
I just have a quick comment. I used to live on Lower Boston, and if you guys start talking about the septic systems and the number of people you're going to allow in these Airbnbs, just take a ride down around, you know, some of the lakes, when you see two and three fifth-wheel trailers tied into a house's septic system, and each one of those trailers can sleep seven or eight people, there's a lot more problems with septic systems around this town than, than just Airbnb. So, um, and I understand, I, you know, my parents had a place in New Hampshire. We had a great location for swimming and stuff, and it was destroyed by people who came and ran into the house one time. And it was for good. I mean, we lost that property for good, so, um, you know, people who are renting out their houses ought to be conscious of that anyhow, because it can, it could cause a lot more problems than just paying their debt.
What, what's the difference, say, you know, like, I get your point, like, we're destroying the beach and that. What happens if I say, "Okay, I got some family," and I say, "Come on up," and the whole group up, "I'm not renting out," or "Let me, let me use it," what's the difference? But what's going to happen is that some neighbors think you're renting out, they're calling you up, calling code, saying, "Hey, did I rent a place next door?" "No, they're not, it's family." That's where it comes really great.
So, I mean, you're there for, you're...
But I'm not there. But I'm not there. You know, I'm off on a business trip or I'm on a vacation. So now I'm supposed to be an hour away. I'm not.
But the responsibility still falls on...
It does.
And that responsibility fell on that person who ruined it for everybody in that service team. So anybody who's willing to rent out their property needs to be mindful of that anyhow.
I'm just saying, between renting it, letting your family come up, who knows the difference? It turns into a quack.
Additional comments or questions? So Lee.
Would you like to make a motion to move the question?
Second.
But moved and seconded to end debate is really the motion. And we need a vote on that. All, all is in favor of ending debate and moving to vote, raise your blue cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Okay, the motion on Article 13 is to adopt the article as written. Yes. Yes. No, I think it was. It was, hi. Chris, right here, Chris Wood. Okay. Roland? All right. So the motion is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Woo, we're going to count this one. Okay, put your hands down. Yeah, we're going to do it. So we're going to do, all those in favor, okay, we're going to do the standing vote, okay? All those in favor of the motion, please stand up. The motion is to adopt the articles written. All those in favor, please stand up. Sit down. All those opposed, please stand up. So we got 31 yeses and 32 noes. So the motion... I didn't vote, so 30, that's, that's my bar. All right, let's do this. Unless somebody objects, we're going to just make it, make absolutely sure. It's pretty close. So let's go with this again. All those in favor of the motion, which is to adopt the articles written, please stand up. So what's the question?
I just want to recount it.
We're recounting. Yeah, I, I'll make the decision.
There's somebody in the, in the back, leaders, standing, sitting, and you're voting, you're on this side, but we just want to make sure we count everybody properly.
Okay, that's pretty close.
I would assume that everybody's voting the same way, second time. All right, are any of you participating in one way or the other? If you're more, if you're over here with the house, if you're not, let us take them, let them stay there, we'll help you.
Yeah, it's all those in favor. It's pretty confusing from this vantage. We've got people in the back and on the side, so we're trying to make sure that we're accurate. Okay, so that is 32. All those opposed to the motion, the motion deemed to adopt the article as written. All those opposed. All right. So what did you get?
I got 20.
20. So that is 36. 36 to 32 on the second go-around, so the motion does not pass, is not approved, which is same as the first count. Okay, uh, we're now going to Article, we've still got one more vote. J. Ward, two members of the road committee for two-year term. Article 7, choose two members of the town road committee for a three-year, excuse me, for a two-year term because of COVID. Okay, I'm sorry. We did Article 7. Article 8, choose three members of the town road committee for a three-year term. Road committee for a three-year term. Any nominations? Leslie? Other nominations? Yes, Roland? Dennis Long the third. Wait a minute. Lee? Matt Stevens. Three members for a three-year term, road committee. Nominations? Any none? I guess, how many names have we got? Three? Three? So Dennis is going to make a motion? We don't need to have, we need to go through. Yes, one ballot for those three people? Road committee for three-year terms. Anybody object to that? Okay, so we moved and seconded, is there a second? Second, that we essentially adopt this slate, uh, by consensus. Okay, we're going to take, we're going to verify it with at least three written ballots. Article nine, Conservation Force Committee. Okay, for Article nine, we're going to be distributing, uh, some ballots, since we didn't have, there wasn't one in the ballot. We're going, we're going to verify, are we ready to verify these? So we're still on Article eight. All right, so the results of Article eight are the three members who are... Is Dennis still up there? Are they up there, Michelle? Go on, okay. Okay, everybody set with that one? Article nine, choose two members of the Conservation Force Committee for a three-year term. We're going to pass out little white soaps. Okay, let's get nominations on first, first. Article nine, two members of the Conservation Force Committee for a three-year term. Other nominations? Gavin? Wesley Hannah, who? The old woman, okay. Other nominations for Conservation and Force Committee? Lee, I'm sorry. Kelly Collins. Additional nominations for Conservation and Force Committee? Is Kelly Collins here? Yeah, okay, great. Hang on just a minute, Kelly. Michelle, who's the other name? Kelly, who's the other? Wesley, okay. Wesley, I don't think is here. Wesley here? Kelly, would you like to tell us who you are? Okay. Kelly Collins is one of the nominees.
Good morning, Adam. Thank you for your patience and a wonderful day. This is, I'm Kelly Collins. I grew up in Lebanon, May, but spent my whole summers here in corn on Edina, my Atlee Swarms. I'm camp for my Atlee Wolf Conference camp. I've been a member, I've resident here for approximately three years, and I see as this community grows. It's a wonderful community, lovely. We want to make sure that we keep our conservation, um, and on our land, forest, right? Excuse me, our farm lands and all of that. I think it's very important as we grow as a community to remember to keep our conservation of the historical state. I have been on the Government Affairs Chair of the State May for May E&amp;A. I am a nurse, like my great aunt Louise was. I also work, I have been an immediate past president of May E&amp;A, uh, so I am well aware of how community work and how it functions. I hope to bring fresh ideas and, um, serve you well in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Has everybody got a white sheet to vote on? Article nine, we're choosing two members of the Conservation and Force Committee.
Anybody else want to bring a ballot?
Okay, we need two names on the white sheet of paper, or one name, whatever you desire. You ready? Bring it up with your blue card and press the button. Okay, just to remind you, we're going to break at 11:30. We have a few more articles. And we appreciate your patience. Yes, sir, question? Last ball of ballots for the last Conservation Committee. Yes, sir, this is a, not about an article.
It is not, but it is about how we vote on articles. And I think there's a, I don't have any problem with the vote on short-term rentals in terms of, I think it probably does reflect the will of the people, and that's all that matters. But I think there's a difference between taking a recount and taking a revote. And so to, for one position to go from 31 to 32 votes, and the other to go from a total of 32 to 36, would indicate that either the counting is off significantly, or people who didn't vote the first time chose to vote the second, or to change their vote. And that's the difference between a recount and a revote. So we, I think we need to do things differently in terms of how we count, uh, because I don't think that the democratic process involves the opportunity to change your vote or to vote when you didn't vote the first time. Thank you.
So, uh, we're counting, we'll keep going. Article 14. City town will authorize board of selectmen to appropriate and expend monies from undesigned account balance for the purchase of equipment or to use as they deem advisable to meet the unanticipated expenses and emergencies that occurred during fiscal year 2021, 2022. Expenditures in excess of $500 shall require advice and recommendation of the [inaudible]. of the Warrant Finance Committee. Maximum expenditure is about eight thousand dollars. Warrant Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Warrant Finance Committee recommends accept the articles written on a five-to-one vote. Is there a motion on Article fourteen? Paul. No? Motion on Article fourteen?
I make a motion on Article fourteen, passes as written.
To approve the articles written, is it seconded? Is there a second? It's seconded on Article fourteen, the motion is to adopt the article as written. Paul.
Uh, so a little, little history on this. Um, so this is sort of a standard article that you see every year. In two thousand nineteen, which you may recall as being the last sort of normal town meeting before now, um, in Article eleven on town floor, that the phrase near the end there that begins expenditures in excess and ending in warrant finance committee. So basically talking about advice and recommendation of the Warrant Finance Committee. That was added on town floor in Article eleven, two thousand nineteen. We inherited it, basically, it just sort of stuck there. Um, ramifications, of course, is that warrant finance needs to get together whenever the selectmen want to spend more than five hundred bucks. Uh, but I just sort of wanted to point out that the phrase, historically, it was advice and consent of warrant finance on a number of articles. Um, and those have been stricken in years, from years past because there's no legal binding. Warrant finance is not an executive committee. Its, its opinion is not binding on the, on the town body, uh, or the, or on the selectmen. So regardless of what the Warrant Finance Committee says in, in response to this, the selectmen can do whatever they want. So I just wanted to point out, this was very close to saying advice and consent. Gets really, hey, what do you think? And then we'll do whatever we want to do based on that advice. So just wanted to look into that. Thank you.
Other comments or questions on Article fourteen? Seeing on the motion on Article fourteen is to adopt the motion as written, approve the motion as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. If yes, now those opposed. Article fourteen is adopted as written. Article fifteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize a board of selectmen to dispose of surplus unknown property, with the exception of road equipment, having value of less than or equal to five hundred dollars on such terms and conditions as they deem advisable, and to execute any necessary documents to accomplish said purpose. And then in parentheses, all equipment having a value of more than five hundred dollars should be put out to public bid. Funds received in such sales shall be placed in a capital reserve account for the associated department. Board of Selectmen recommends approve the article. Warrant Finance Committee recommends that we amend the article to read the same as it's written on Article fifteen, except at the end where it says funds shall, funds received in such sales shall be placed in the undesignated fund account and afforded to vote. So we have a recommendation with the selectmen, we have a proposed amendment from the Warrant Finance Committee. Dennis, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve, uh, recommendation of the Warrant Finance Committee.
Is there a second? The move is seconded to adopt Article fifteen is recommended by the Warrant Finance Committee. Now again, the difference between the two is the last sentence. And the undesignated fund account would receive any funds as opposed to the capital reserve account. Are there questions or comments on Article fifteen? Paul.
Um, I'm not necessarily gonna weigh in here about which of these two is, is the best choice, but I'm gonna state that I am gonna be voting in favor of this so that, um, if it fails, that I can reconsider and bring up the original article. Thank you.
Okay, Paul brings up a good, we didn't talk about this in the rules to start out with this reconsideration. Uh, reconsideration of long and fluid meeting where people are coming and going is an interesting device to do things differently than you did the first time. So I'm gonna say as moderator, we're not gonna reconsider something that has happened more than three articles passed. Okay, we get three articles down, and we have a changing population here, and somebody moves reconsideration, and there's some rules with that. We're not doing it. And this is, again, subject to challenge by somebody here. Reconsideration is often abused, uh, but we're not doing it here.
Yes, speak on the article.
Okay. Uh, you're speaking on the art area now, right?
On the motion.
On the motion, yes.
You're speaking on the motion.
Okay.
And the problem is if, if the motion passes with the Finance Committee recommendation, um, the way it's written out now is if the fire department decides to sell a fire truck or whatever, and go back to the capital reserve account, that way there, for the next one that comes, you know, all the road commissioners, if they decided, um, to sell a piece of equipment that they don't, well, I don't think anything worth a whole amount, you can sell it, how do I say they did? Okay, you know, what would end up happening is instead of going into their accounts, going to the general fund, you know, what happens when it goes to the general fund? Okay, so why are you doing a move of money from this account to this account, back to this account, back to that account? It's like keeping it in the account that was originally voted for after, original town meeting, voting on that. So, uh, by keeping it like this, I don't, I don't agree with the, um, change. I'm, uh, just looking at this.
Okay, here's an interesting, so if we vote against this motion that we've essentially defeated Article fifteen. We're gonna vote on, we're gonna vote on the amendment first, okay, so...
Then we can vote on the original.
Yes, okay. We're voting on the recommendation of the Warrant Finance Committee, which then, if it fails, leaves us open to go back to the original motion, just so it raises, we gotta do something about this, okay? Okay, Dennis, the motion is to adopt the Warrant Finance Committee's...
Right, that was the recommendation, positive motion.
Yes, yeah, that's not...
The, the rationale for the Warrant Finance Committee is, uh, anytime that the fire department, for example, uh, has used some, uh, needed something, or the school, or any other department, the townspeople have always voted to give it to them. And when things are sold in this town, uh, you need to remember that everything belongs to the residents of the town or the taxpayers of the town. And the money that from this, if it is sold, should go back into the undesignated fund balance. And if there is an emergency, that somebody needs something for, then they come to the town meeting and normally it gets approved. Uh, it, it doesn't make any sense to, to, for a department to sell something, and then that money goes into that department. It should be up to the townspeople, um, where the money goes. That was the rationale of the Warrant Finance.
Additional comments or questions on Article fifteen?
So, so the problem with that theory is that really we should have any capital approved accounts. Because what you're doing is saying, well, we get what we want anyways, we're gonna go vote for it, so why should we put some money in the savings? Okay, instead of taking something and putting it into the savings account, that's already in that department. So technically what you're saying is, well, we don't have reserve accounts.
I never said that.
Well, that's a complete difference.
No, I'm not.
Wait, 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 wait.
No, I'm not.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, just one at a time here. Okay, additional comments or questions on Article fifteen? Yes, sir?
Um, if I'm reading this wrong, I would ask that someone correct me, but it appears to me that the board of selectmen would determine what property is valued at five hundred dollars or less, and that there would be no restriction on the board or family or friends buying that property, and the board can dispose of it as they see fit. So I'm not accusing anyone of any wrongdoing, but I think the appearance of impropriety would be there, and it would open our board up to a lot of potential criticism and scrutiny. So I would, I'm voting against it for that reason.
Okay, the motion is to adopt the Warrant Finance Committee's recommendation. Are there other comments or questions on Article fifteen? Seeing on the motion on Article fifteen is to adopt the Warrant Finance Committee's recommendation, which essentially places any monies received from sales in the undesignated fund account. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your blue cards. Yes, now, those opposed? I think we're gonna count this one again. Close. Close. Okay, so you want to just stand? It's easier for standing. So all those in favor of the motion, which is to adopt the Warrant Finance Committee's recommendation, please stand. I got some people in the bleachers, the gentlemen in the white t-shirt, you're a resident, you're, okay. Okay, thank you, sit down. All those opposed to the motion, which is to adopt the Warrant Finance Committee's recommendation, okay, it gets clear. And so we are at, uh, forty-two, twenty-five to forty-two, not at this most as I thought initially. So the motion fails to be approved on a twenty-five to forty-two vote. So now here we are, uh, we don't have any authorization in this town meeting, so we're gonna look to Paul to fix this. Your motion now is what?
Um, I move to reconsider Article fifteen as written.
Okay, so reconsideration, basically, we're gonna revote this thing, Mary?
I can vote it.
Seconded by Mary.
I can vote it on the prevailing side.
Yeah, so one of the issues of reconsideration is you have to have voted on the prevailing side. Prevailing side here is the, was the no side. Okay, so we now are under reconsideration. All those in favor of reconsidering this, please raise your blue cards. Thank you, yes, now, those opposed? Okay, so the motion to reconsider is passed.
So I threw a monkey wrench into this because I was saying, hey, if it wins, I might go the other way, but I voted on the, on the, uh, the losing side. Didn't that fail?
It did fail.
It did fail. So I voted to, uh, to approve it, so I have no right to reconsider.
No.
Uh, I would invite however anyone who voted on the...
I thought you said you voted on the no.
I voted on the, I voted on the yes side.
Okay, here comes Rick.
Okay, so anybody who voted no can do what I was just trying to do.
I think, I think most of you accept Article fifteen as written and as voted on by the selectmen.
Okay, we're still doing reconsideration. Okay, so your motion is to reconsider Article fifteen.
Yep.
And this is seconded, Mary is seconded. So now we're gonna revote that as a proper motion. All those in favor of reconsideration, again, please raise your cards. Thank you, yes, now, those opposed? So we're now under reconsideration. Now Rick can make a motion he chooses.
I make a motion we accept Article fifteen as written, voted on by the selectmen.
Okay, motions, the move is seconded by Mary that, uh, we adopt Article fifteen as written and recommended by the board of selectmen, which is to place any monies from these sales in the capital reserve account of the associated department. Are there questions or comments on the motion in front of us? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, which is to adopt Article fifteen as recommended by the selectmen, please raise your cards. If yes, now, those opposed? I think we're, I think we're good. So the motion passes or is adopted, Article fifteen is adopted, recommended by the selectmen is passed and adopted. Okay, so back to the electorate. So the people that have got elected to the Conservation and Enforcement Committee, Wesley Ham, Kelly Collins. Okay, we are at eleven-thirty, uh, we're gonna take a half hour for lunch, and please, please go and help these folks who have spent a lot of time here getting ready for lunch. Half hour. Incidentally, as we go through all these motions here, somebody feels like they wanna make a motion on a particular article. The thing to do is to get up here at the mic before we take up that article. Occasionally I hear the complaint after meetings that, well, one person is always making the motions. And that's true because it's easier, uh, quicker, but if somebody feels passionate about any particular article, and wants to make a motion, whatever, for or against, get right up here so that I can answer it.
How would you make a motion against an article?
Well, uh, yeah. Good question, because that's an issue in front of us, making that motion against an article. Uh, I guess maybe it's not the motion so much as for the act, it's the act, or after the motion is made, you can stand up and say you don't vote for this. We've had some of that today already. So making the motion not to pass, pass or not to pass, uh, typically has been the Finance Committee or the selectmen or whatever, we have recommendations here. I don't have an answer for you. Make a, to make a motion, uh, not to pass is one thing I'd say today we're not gonna do, because it's a negative motion. Uh, Tom Moore and I just talked, he disagrees with me, because we've done that before, negative motions, but the main moderator's manual basically says it's confusing to people. Unless you're absolutely paying attention in the, in the motion, then no means yes, and yes means no, uh, leaves people wondering what happened sometimes. Tom?
Since moderator, just a question on that point. Historically, you've used the words suspense in the article, make motion of suspense in the article. I think that's clear, big question.
Right, and then, and I'll go back to the main moderator's manual, they're basically saying people come to town meeting expecting to take action on all of the articles, that is the expectation out there, whether it's valid or not, that's what they're suggesting. And therefore, vote things, make sure you know either approve or disapprove things, you know? Vote no. I guess the message, at least that I read from the moderator's manual, is this, you shouldn't be afraid to vote no on something if you don't agree with it. That's a solution that is less confusing, at least in their mind. Okay, let's go. Ready, ready? Uh, Article sixteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize a board of selectmen to sell any tax-acquired property and to issue a quitclaim deed for the same. And to put funds received from for sales into the municipal undesignated fund. Sales be by seal, biz, or public auction if, if to other than owner of record at the time of foreclosure. And no selectman during the term of his or her office may acquire from the town any interest in real estate acquired by the town in account of non-farmative taxes unless the owner of record at the time of foreclosure was the selectman or the son, daughter, spouse, or parent of the selectman. And then an exception, except that municipal officers shall use special sale proceeds required by thirty-six MRSA Section nine forty-three C for qualifying homestead property if they choose to sell it to anyone other than the former owner. Is there a motion on Article sixteen? Dennis?
I make the motion that we approve Article sixteen as written.
Is there a second? The move is seconded to adopt Article sixteen as written. Are there questions or comments on Article sixteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, which is to adopt the articles written, please raise your blue cards. Hands down, thank you. All those opposed? Article sixteen is adopted as, Rick, Article seventeen. See if the town will vote to authorize a board of selectmen upon request of the treasurer to allow the treasurer to waive foreclosure of a tax lien on a specified property for a specified year with reference to the tax lien certificate recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds. In circumstances where the board of selectmen determine that foreclosure may encumber the town, the list of waived foreclosure shall be listed in the annual town report by MAF and LFS. Board of Selectmen recommend approve the articles written. Warrant Finance Committee also recommends approve, adopt the articles written. Dennis?
Make the motion to approve Article seventeen as written.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article seventeen as written. Are there questions or comments on Article seventeen? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to adopt Article seventeen as written, please raise your cards. If, if, yes, now, those opposed? Article seventeen is adopted as written. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to have real estate and personal property taxes first payment come due on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and the second payment on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Interest to be charged at six percent on all taxes paid after October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And interest on the beta taxes to be paid by the town at four percent pursuant to thirty-six MRSA Section five oh six A to authorize a tax clip. MRSA Section 506a to authorize a tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes before the tax commitment with no interest. Board of Selectmen recommends approval of the article. Warrant Finance Committee also recommends approval. Is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve Article eighteen as written.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article eighteen as written. Are there questions or comments on Article eighteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting Article eighteen as written, please raise your cards. Hands down, those opposed. Article eighteen is adopted as written. Article nineteen. See if the town will vote to authorize a board of selectmen to make application for and execute any documents related to any grant or donation, to accept any such grant or donation or any fees to appropriate such funds for their designated use so long as they do not require matching funds or encumber the town in any way. The treasurer shall, and shall be notified of any grant application, and a copy shall be kept on file in the treasurer's office. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Warrant Finance Committee is saying. Is there a motion on Article nineteen?
I make a motion to accept Article nineteen as written.
Is there a second? Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article nineteen as written. Are there questions or comments about Article nineteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting Article nineteen as written, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article nineteen is adopted as written, approved as written. Article twenty. To see if the town will vote to accept revenues received from NEMA, FEMA, claims during the upcoming fiscal year into the Emergency Disaster Reserve Fund. Said funds are to be appropriated at the discretion of the board of selectmen to restore budgets of the various departments for expenses incurred during a declared event. The appropriation shall not exceed the expenditures incurred during the declared event. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article. Warrant Finance Committee also recommends approval. Is there a motion on Article twenty?
I make a motion to approve Article twenty as written.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article twenty as written. Are there questions or comments on Article twenty? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting Article twenty as written, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article twenty is adopted as written. Article twenty-one. See if the town will vote to carry forward the following fund balances, and allow the balance carried forward to be appropriated to the designated department in subsequent year. There's a list here, which I'm not going to read unless somebody likes, would like me to read it?
Way to read it.
Way to read it, without objection. Okay, all other expenditure fund balances and revenues to lapse into the undesignated fund. I mean, let's redo that. So there's a list of funds here, and at the bottom of that, it says to carry forward but not appropriate unless the following funds appropriate, probably fund balances.
That's the moderator, that's the bottom five.
Yes, of that, and so I'm just trying to make sure we can get enough up here to make sense. Okay, is there a motion on Article twenty-one?
I make the motion to approve Article twenty-one as written.
Is there a second? The move is seconded to adopt Article twenty-one as recommended by the board of selectmen and the warrant finance committee. And there's an informational piece on the bottom of that page. Are there any questions or comments on Article twenty-one?
Yes, I do.
Okay, then Jay, after you.
The biggest problem I have with this is out of the surfacing.
Yeah.
Every year, the town meeting votes a certain amount of money for surfacing.
Yeah.
And this last year, District One was going to spend, I believe, the rest of his money on surfacing, but it wasn't part of the price, so he wasn't allowed to do it, so it's carried over. It will be carried over if it just passes. And the other thing is, we've had a problem the last three years, that the money that the townspeople vote for resurfacing, only one year has been spent. And when the town meeting, this is myself personally, as a concerned citizen of the state, I, I believe when the town meeting votes to appropriate money for a project, that it should be done within that year. And that hasn't been happening, and so that's why I have an issue with just carrying the money over.
Other questions?
Sure, yes. So the issue we have with the surfacing, this was something that Mr. Mooney and I went forward through back in the day because, you know, say you're coming to June and you can't get the pavement outfit there, and you've got forty, fifty grand left, okay? Because the pavement outfit couldn't show up, we were going to lose our money. At the time, we weren't getting, nobody was near the amount, everyone didn't buy. So forty, even twenty grand at the time was a lot of money. So that's why we put this forward back in the day. The issue with the pavement now is, is, you know, like District Two, our road commissioner passed away, and they didn't get to spend that money. So by the time we got to appoint the new road commissioner and this and that, time had gone by, and by taking away that money, all that was doing was hurting the people on that District Two because, as I said, you're taking away, here's what we paid. So now, like rolling this over like we have, it's going to give our road commissioner, our District Two road commissioner, money to catch up on unfortunate circumstances. And it would only be doubtful District Two would do that. Or District One?
Other questions or comments on Article twenty-one? Jay?
Yes, thank you. So I have, actually, what Mr. Long had talked about, I have the same concerns that you're just, if you don't expend it, you should come back for the next budget and ask for the money again, not just roll it over because you're already asking for the money with the future budget. The real problem, and this is really what, the only way I can get to this question, I think I've raised this before, is I cannot believe that District One and District Two are exactly the same and should be given exactly the same money every single year. It seems like they should come forward with specific projects that have to be done rather than just coming out arbitrarily, and it seems like it's arbitrarily, a number, because, quite frankly, again, both districts are not equal. So in light of the fact that you've just given the same budget year after year for the same two roads, it doesn't get spent, well, then it should just come back and you have to go forward to be a zero-sum budget, and you have to adjust for every single item that you want to do that year, so.
Are there, are there other questions or comments? Yes, David?
So we, this year, when the road commissioners gave their budget, I believe there was a $200,000 increase in their budget on Hot Topic, am I correct? Each side, so it was a $400,000 increase in the pavement budget. So what we did is we looked at what they had in reserve, and, you know, we were trying to keep the tax rate the same. We looked at what was in reserve, and we actually turned around and we cut that back down to the original estimate budget because of what we had in reserve. So there is a lot of thought put behind it because of that, that reserve account, there's money there. So we're not adding, we're not increasing the amount and having the reserve, we're also looking at both, both cases. So, and right now, like this budget here, it may look like both sides have the same money, but if you look at the bridge project, it was, well, we deleted that, so I just, but there's a lot of thought put into the pavement stuff. We're trying not to increase these budgets year to year, but by having that reserve account, what it does is, instead of making a major impact all at once in one year, we don't have to do that because if they run over, they want to finish a project, that's a lot of it too. It may not get the projects done in because of an outside source. It may not be their fault, it might be what the weather, natural disaster, or just the paving crew or subcontractor you use it. So, but I believe this works well, and it's getting us to a point where, when I was road commissioner, I think I had $90,000 worth of paving a year, and we're getting up to the point where we're actually got a serviceable amount of money to be able to use, and to start taking away those reserve accounts, just putting us going backwards.
Additional comments or questions? Then?
Pressed off. There was a $400,000 increase in the pavement this year.
Well, no. That's what they asked for.
Hold on a minute, please. This $400,000 total, that's from the both ends, District One and District Two, and I want to make it very clear that momentum at the time was road commissioner. He spent all the paving money, all right? But that's the only year all the paving money was being spent. And I appreciate the fact that a new road commissioner, who just got elected, wasn't ready to do any paving this spring, it was hard enough on him just to jump in and plow and sand the road. So I appreciate that, but still, the three years ago, there was absolutely no reason why the pavement wasn't done. And this money should not be carried over year after year. District One, the pavement has been done every year, except the first year will was in there because there wasn't enough money in the pavement to do the project he wanted to do. And that's the history of it.
Other comments or questions? Nancy?
I object to this simply because it's not a very clean way of accounting. We are carrying forward these funds, the purpose of moving the town meeting to June from March and changing our fiscal year was so that we could have more accurate year-end accounting, and this muddies things up because you really don't know what the departments have spent until you're actually auditing, which could be October.
Other comments or questions on Article twenty-one? The motion is to adopt the article as written. Yes, David?
What ends up happening here is if I have $50,000 in my account, I don't want to lose it, right? I'm the road commissioner. So all of a sudden, July is coming, I'm going to go all in. A road commissioner may go all in, spend that money where it may not be needed just to spend that money. That's the other point you're going to look at. And to Mr. Long's point, three years ago, that money did not get spent. As I resigned as road commissioner October, and Mr. Mooney did, so that's why it didn't get spent. It was all on me, okay, because of people like you.
Wait, 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 let's not go there. Go ahead, be done. Mary, comments or questions?
No, I just want to say, I believe Adam was just made road commissioner June eighth, and you're telling him he has to spend the money by June third, right? So we need to put it in the reserve so he has a little more time to think about what roads to do, and he can do the roads July and August and September when the weather is in our favor.
That's what it is. Other comments or questions? Dennis?
It starts July first, the money that's appropriated in town meeting. He doesn't have to spend the money that's appropriated in town meeting before June third.
Do you have to spend the money that's in there right now?
That's up to the road commissioner. We elected Adam because we know that he's responsible, we can trust him, and I respect that.
Additional comments or questions? Judy, on Article twenty-one?
This article as a whole was recommended to be passed by the Department of Finance Committee, who were kind of hovering on just one little section of it, I suggest we move the question.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Seconded, if we end the date, all those in favor of ending the date, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Okay, so we're moving right on to the motion on Article twenty-one is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article twenty-one is adopted as written. Article twenty-two. See if the town will vote to accept any and all funds received from the state of Maine and the federal government and appropriate any designated revenues received for their designated use. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article. Warrant Finance Committee is saying. Is there a motion on Article twenty-two? It's been moved and seconded by Chris in the second? Chris, Chris Whitman, and this gentleman, right? Mike, it's Mike, okay. Let's go to Chris, okay? Sorry, Mike. Next time. So the motion on Article twenty-two is to adopt the article as written. Are there any questions or comments on Article twenty-two? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the article as recommended by the selectmen, please raise your hands. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article twenty-two is adopted as recommended by the board of selectmen as written. Article twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to appropriate fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two anticipated municipal revenues from the categories listed below, and to use funds from the municipal undesignated fund balance to reduce the amount to be raised by taxation during tax commitment. These are the categories: excise tax, interest in penalties, plumbing, and building permits, pre-growth reimbursement, town animal fees, vicar of the nurse license, vital records, agents' fees, investment earnings, ambulance service fees, recycling returns, and miscellaneous non-restricted state revenue not previously appropriated in other articles. Board of Selectmen recommend approval. Warrant Finance Committee is the same. Is there, is there a motion on Article twenty-three? Roland?
Make a motion we accept Article twenty-three as written.
It's been moved and seconded by Arnie to adopt Article twenty-three as written. Other questions or comments on Article twenty-three? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to adopt Article twenty-three as written, please raise your hand, your cards, thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article twenty-three is adopted as recommended as written. Moderator? Yes?
I like the, say something.
Okay, on article, is it not a particular article?
Well, it's on, some of the articles are twenty-sixth and thirtieth, so this is, this is just a comment.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to ask, what it is, if these entire budgets pass as presented by the board of selectmen, the tax rate will remain the same, no increases for the next fiscal year. The reason why we, we wanted to make sure that everybody knew this is because there was a large amount of money brought over from the school department, which we thank a lot, and what we had done is, we had already done our budget, you know, we made our cuts this and that to keep our tax rate all the same, it was going to be a little bit of an increase, and then this money came in, and the warrant selection, we had a very limited timeframe to be able to sit back and figure out how we were spending, it was four seventy-three cents, close to $500,000.
It's only a few weeks to try to figure out where we could, you know, make some improvements for the town and pay some bills down and stuff.
So what we had done, so that we didn't have to worry about incurring costs in the next year, we looked at stuff that we thought would be beneficial to the town and utilized that $500,000 and keep the tax rate the same. So as we go down through these budget lines...
Boy, no, Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
We can have these conversations as we get into the warrant articles. These explanations we've heard at selectmen's meetings, and we've been hearing a long time, and I appreciate any opinions anybody's got, but I'm not here for election.
I believe, just, David, finish it up, okay? Well, the reason why we felt that this was something that we wanted to bring up at this point was this letter that has spread all over your county about some stuff, how we're doing stuff, we just wanted to make it pretty clear, and, okay? Thank you.
As soon as we, yeah, as soon as the motion is moved, maybe second, then you can weigh in on this stuff, okay? So we're not, don't end this, so anything to be done. So the next article is Article twenty-four. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $1,504,650 for general government for wages, operational costs, and employee benefits for the following departments. There's a list of departments and amounts of money. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article, and the warrant finance committee is the same. So we need a motion on Article twenty-four. Yes?
I make the motion to approve Article twenty-four as written.
Seconded. Moved and seconded by Roland to adopt Article twenty-four as written. Now we're open for questions or comments. David, you want to keep going on that theme?
No, I think, I think my point has been made that, well, I guess I can, we were trying to address a, something that had been built in public, it's false, and now we're trying... And now we're trying, we put a lot.
It has nothing to do with this article.
Well, yeah, okay, continue on, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'm not sure it does or doesn't have anything to do with the article. The article is about raising appropriate a million fifty thousand dollars. So I'm looking for comments or questions about the million fifty thousand. Yes, yes ma'am?
Okay, so this went up from last year, correct? How much?
The question is, how much did we raise for wages, operational costs, and employee benefits?
And my other question is, what was the reason for increase? Was it employee raises, what was going on?
There's several things that, it's a overall general government forty-eight thousand dollar increase. We have our debt services in this account. Last year, we budgeted for a half a year of loan payments on the new tanker truck because we knew we would have to start paying payments until January. And this year, we have to pay the whole year. So that alone is an increase of thirty thousand dollars. There are some salary increases.
Is everybody across the board getting the raise?
Everybody across the board is getting an increase.
How much are the name increases?
Some exception.
How much are the name increases?
Three percent, she said.
Three percent, with the exception of the treasurer's office.
How much are you getting?
Seventeen percent.
Wow. Why?
I can explain that. Because when we looked at the amount of pay that she was making, we get every other town in the area, it was way below, and she's not even.
But she works twenty hours, she works part-time.
Okay.
And then you work ten hours at the backlist?
So we took into account that just because she got paid prior, less than she should have, that we are trying to keep our employees in the town hall, honestly. And so when we looked at Alfred and everybody else, which are the same size town, the numbers didn't work. And we felt that it was time, I mean.
Are all things.
And we've done it also with the transfer station. We've given raises that do the same thing. Bring them up to a serviceable, you know, something that, you know, we can keep these employees in that and we can hire up some employees.
Okay, so every year, you're trying to give everybody a three percent?
We do, but the problem was, the amount that she was being paid, okay, did not coalesce with what the surrounding areas were paying her.
She was truly underpaid, she hadn't had.
The three percent didn't do it for us. And we felt that we had to bring our treasurer up to what everybody else is getting, which is only fair. We do that with, you know, our EMTs, everything. We try to be, we try to compare with the other towns. Because that's why we have a hard time getting help.
If I recall.
Wait, 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 wait. Are you finished?
No.
Okay, ask again. Keep asking.
Okay, all right. So I would imagine some of this cost is the health insurance.
Health insurance, flat line here.
Oh, what? Okay. And so with the, so you're giving the employees a three percent raise, which you do every year.
Two years ago.
And she said she had, but you're not even going to do it here. And I also wanted to know, so seventeen percent increase for you, and the land use, I have a question about that as well. So that seemed to have come out.
Wait, wait.
While we're still on the treasurer's position, I just wanted to comment on that one.
It's going to be real quick. You let her finish, okay, then we'll go to the. Okay, so these are relevant, you have it all, so let's go. Go, 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 come on.
If you want.
No, I want you to finish your, I want you to finish your questions, okay?
Okay, I do have a few.
Okay.
It's a large bunch.
Okay, you're right.
So I do have a few questions. So my other question is land use. That went up quite a bit. And we also ended up, this year, the land use, the CEO had left. So for a while, for a few weeks, no bond, you probably were not, we were making a salary at first.
So the land use last year was one hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and forty-four. This year is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-one. And yes, this year, they did not spend all of it, they went back into the general fund. There wasn't much left over. This budget, the lower budget, the one sixty-eight four fifty-one, based on new code officer, lower hours, one division of others, degrees, in the town plan.
Okay. One more question.
Okay, thank you.
My question is with regards to the medical savings account.
Health savings account.
Yeah. So you put some money in for each person or each employee. How much money do you put in that account?
Eighty-five percent of the deductible currently.
So what would that be?
For a family plan, it's just over five thousand, and about twenty-six hundred and four in the bill.
Now, I have another question with regards to that savings account. If an employee, say, was very active, worked ten years, maybe used five thousand dollars, that leaves another forty-five thousand. What happens to that said forty-five thousand? Does it go back to the town, or does the employee get to keep it?
No, the health savings account belongs to the employee, so that employee takes it with them.
Okay, so every year, even if they were helping and didn't use it, you still will fund it, furnish it. Give you, give them fifty-three hundred or twenty-five, whatever you said your funds were. Is that correct? And then they can leave and take that forty-five thousand dollars and walk off.
At the policy's run now.
Sounds like fun.
Other questions or comments? Thank you. So I'm going to go. I'm going to go to Elise, yes, Elise?
I just wanted to comment that over the three years as a selectman, I watched other department salaries increase while the treasurer's office did not increase. So it's a well-deserved increase in addition to her recent certification in, I can't remember the title, but she was recently certified.
Certified person?
Yes, so well deserved.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions on Article 24?
You also do Shapley. Are they considerably cheaper than us, and if so, why? And how do they do it, and why does that cost us so much more than Shapley for treasurer? We've talked about other towns, but we share one, so.
Sure. The job there is very different than it is here. Job there is a regular position. My duties are what the state statute says. You can come in, get some money, spend some money, and that's it. Over here, I'm doing insurance, workers' comp, unemployment, health insurance, paying retirement, preparing the warrants, preparing the budget that they come in. So there's a lot more in the job over here, not just the basic state statute.
Who does that stuff in Shapley?
It is split up between the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen.
I see, okay, thank you. And how much do they pay over there?
Four.
A treasurer?
Thirty-two, thirty-three thousand a year.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments on Article 24? Chief?
I'd just like to say as a department head that if we don't keep the current employees that we have, we will end up hiring more of them because the amount of work that they do. If I didn't have the town administrator and treasurer at my disposal to operate my budgets, I would have to have hired a secretary or two just to work out of my office in the same goes for all the other department heads. They're worth every penny, and they bailed this town out a thousand times over.
Other questions or comments on Article 24? Motion is to adopt the articles recommended by the selectmen, which is to approve the article. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article 24 is adopted as written and approved as written. Article 25. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars for the earned leave fund pursuant to Title 26 MRS Section 637, which is effective first of January of this year for all non-exempt employees to carry any unexempt funds into the next fiscal year, which is FY 2223. Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. War and Finance Committee recommends an amendment to amend the article. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars for the earned leave fund pursuant to Title 26 MRS Section 637, effective the first of the year for all non-exempt employees on a four-to-vote. Are there a motion on Article 25?
I'd like to make a martial motion to accept Article 25 as written, as accepted by the selectmen.
Is there a second on?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 25 as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, which is to approve the article. Are there questions or comments on Article 25?
The reason, and the treasurer can correct me if I'm wrong, we have to carry over some of that funding is because the hours are on the calendar year, and we operate on the fiscal year, so if people have hours left over from the previous fiscal year, they can carry them into the, they're in the current calendar year, which is they're paid for those. So she's calculated a number that calculates the total number of hours by the employees for the year calendar, but we operate on the fiscal, so you've got to keep paying that over to make up the total time that people may have proved in curiosity for the next fiscal year. Is that correct?
Very good one.
Thank you.
The job, right? Other comments or questions on Article 25? Dennis? No, okay, all right. Other comments or questions? The motion on Article 25 is to adopt the articles recommended by the Board of Selectmen, which is to approve the articles written. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article 25 is adopted as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, which is as written. Article 26. To see if the town will vote to establish a revaluation fund for the town-wide property assessment revaluation to appropriate from the undesignated fund a sum of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the same and to carry the balance into the next fiscal year. The note here is, there's a note about, which is not part of the article, a note to, the amount needed in reserve over the next two years is one hundred and ninety-five thousand. Last revaluation was completed in 2010, requiring sixty-five thousand dollars additional to appropriate in the next fiscal year. This is more history. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article. War and Finance Committee recommends also approval of the article on a five-to-one vote. Is there a motion on Article 26?
I make a motion we approve Article 26 as written.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 26 as written. Are there questions or comments on Article 26? Seeing now, all those in favor of the motion, which is to adopt the articles written, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article 26 is adopted as written. Article 27. See if the town will vote to appropriate from the undesignated fund fifty thousand dollars for the exterior repairs to the town hall, back to town hall, including but not limited to siding on the back of the building. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. War and Finance Committee recommends ought not to pass. What's your motion?
I make a motion we approve Article 27 as written.
Moved and seconded to adopt Article 27 as written. Have a second in that? Chris Whitman? Okay, this is one of the seven articles I talked about with the Finance Committee making a ought not to pass. So if in fact you, we're saying upfront, if you agree with the War and Finance Committee on this recommendation, you would be voting no. That's one way to deal with this, I think, the most direct way. There's some controversy about this, but. Other comments or questions on Articles 27? Joyce?
Thank you, moderator. Two questions. Number one, it's confusing, and clarification is necessary. What is the plan for the fifty thousand dollars? I mean, does it include like the back stairway? And personally, I kind of joke about that. If we ever needed to go out of that back stairway, you know I'm not a small woman, I'd let somebody bigger than me go up first. Because, you know, I just don't know what shape that stairway is in. So is there a plan?
Can anybody talk, is there a plan for the fifty thousand dollar exterior repairs? Is that what you're asking?
No.
I don't.
Well, what ended up happening was, like I had talked before, we had gotten this extra money, and it really wasn't something we were, we didn't want to raise taxes, so it was a bit of a backburner. But we ended up having to come up with some ways to, you know, do some approvals and spend this money, which is everything, you know, the tax rate's the same. So we were talking about doing.
But did you say, take it from that link, all, put it here?
Somebody has some money to try to get.
So.
We started first.
Yes, pretty much. And the problem we're having, we're having a hard time getting people to come to us. We did get one estimate that we were working on windows, but we're having a hard time right now. As everybody knows right now, nobody will give a quote right now because of the price materials is more this and that. Nobody can stand behind those quotes. But by having the money in there, it gives us more leverage to go all the way. Say, okay, get a quote, do it.
That's why the money's there.
With your question to, I guess I'm just going to ask, to the forge, I mean, this has included, but not limited to siding. So that could be.
There's point repair, there's.
That's why we put the exterior repairs, because we didn't just want to siding. Because we know we have siding to be done, but what ends up happening, to give is a side, and that is a number issue, another issue, which everybody knows. That's why we tried to make it more, more broad. So, but right now, we would like to windows and some siding.
Additional comments or questions on Article 27? Charlie?
Sort of covers this one and also the next one, basically to this one. It's almost as if this is a blank check to be used at the discretion of the selectmen, and that can be good or it can be bad. But I personally would like to see a larger bill, or listing, material listing, whatever you want to call it, what sort of repairs you intend or foresee the building needing to figure out whether or not it's justifiable.
Well, we have started that one, we've committed, and that is something that we are addressing.
Well, we're voting on medicine, and we should really have the population, the citizenry should have an idea. What are you planning or thinking about spending this money on, instead of just giving you a blank check?
Other comments or questions, Arnie, on Article 27? Motion is to adopt the articles written.
Why don't I do putting this into like a spending account? Statutory refund or something? This is just saying, like the previous speaker said, it's just like an open account, right now.
Other comments or questions on Article 27? Yes, sir?
I like to know what the need is before I threw money for something, and, you know, we just spent a considerable amount of time on the overall employment budget and so forth, over forty-eight thousand dollars, which is less than five percent of the whole amount that was requested. So to me, to then exceed that forty-eight thousand to fifty, without really a good explanation of where this is going, I would not vote for it.
Other comments or questions on Article, yes, sir?
So the building, as it looks now, we have, we had a previous CEO, Mr. Siding, probably five, eight years ago, if not. He wasn't able to continue it, doing his regular job. We've gone out of bid many times, and people are just not, they're not interested in giving us a quote on a job knowing that the funds aren't available to those live homes. That's just what we're finding with the contractors. There are two and a half sides of that back building that have no siding on at all. So the idea with this, when the school moved for that five hundred thousand that the board needed to try to expend, or the tax rate is going to drop substantially and then get raised back next year, is to look at building maintenance, to look at loans that the town has, to look at those kind of things that wouldn't take any tax next year. So the fifty thousand dollars is not going to do the building, it's not going to do everything it needs. I mean, we need windows, and we need siding, and just to walk, in the back porch, and just to walk around it. The whole business is that. We would at least have a starting place, and I assure you that's, this number is not.
The school also is.
It's an issue with the insurance company as well, because they're not keeping up with building maintenance. But until we get the contractors out to look at it, and help us step by step, if we do windows first, anybody that's been in my office and has tested the windows in there, they actually blow in on windows all the day. We come into the office, and the whole window is sitting in my office, a whole glass. So we did get, before the glass came out, because there were numbers that are, you know, probably somewhat will stay the same, but we called, I called lots of contractors, and many told me they thought it looked providing. But with the price material and the fact that it is that far away from July one, and we're doing our budgets in February, March, they just wouldn't commit to prices. So we had to put some sort of number in there, hoping we could chip away at the building so that it doesn't, you know, rot.
Other comments or questions on Article 27? Seeing now, motion is to adopt the articles written. All those in favor? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your blue cards. If you can, hands down those opposed. Article 27 passes as written. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the undesignated fund $25,000 for purchase and installation of a new HVAC system in the Acton Town Hall and Townhouse Meeting Room. Board of Selectmen recommend, recommend approval of the article. Warren Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written on a 4-2 vote. Dennis?
I make the motion, uh, that Article 20.
28.
28, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. Is approved with an amended dollar amount of $20,000, reducing from 20 to 25.
You're proposing an amendment. Actually, you can actually make the motion straight away. You're proposing that Article 28 appropriate $20,000.
Right.
Is there a second?
That's one.
Is there a second? Mike seconds it. Okay, the motion on Article 28 is to appropriate from undesignated fund $20,000 for the purchase and installation of a new HVAC system in the Acton Town Hall and Townhouse Meeting Room.
Might you rassle now for that, Mr. Moderator, that is, that's the quotes we got, was sent out to the Warren Finance Committee to do this work.
Okay.
That was a little over $19,000.
Are there other questions or comments on Article 28? Jennifer, you want to talk?
Well, I did, as the town manager gathered things, and Dennis is correct, we got quotes from House of Valtech, because of our meeting, and cooling, one of them, for the election hall, is 97.24, and the office room is 10,824. And I appreciate Dennis' effort to save $5,000. All effort bottom said, all electrical to be done by others, so these quotes do not, if I remember you saw that, do not include the electrical work. So that's why the Board of Selectmen increased it to $5,000, so we should want to adopt it and complete it in fiscal years.
I also wanted to, I also wanted to add that these due of the fresh air intakes that you asked about, this is on these quotes, just so you know that.
I read them.
I didn't know.
I read them.
Plus, plus that, obviously, we just amended to, doesn't cover the estimate.
Additional comments or questions? Nancy?
Is this something that you could use the COVID relief funds for?
Michelle has been a lot studying on that.
Yeah, so, yes, eventually we can use the COVID relief funds for ventilation in conflict buildings, so that would be the town meeting room. But possibly not the actual town hall where the offices are, because we're not considering car again. That's, I mean, we're a year out from spending that money. At least a year out, and it's going to come before the town, it's going to come before you guys to spend it. MMA said that do not, do not use the money in your blanket state federal grant money article. And so that ventilation is one thing that would be able to be used for.
Other comments or questions? Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a question, in legislature this year, we voted to give the full 5% of revenue sharing, which will come 90 days after we closed on yesterday. Will that change this year's tax rate when you're getting that much more money, or will that take effect till next year? The other, one more question. The other thing is, we also voted bipartisan to fully fund education, as the voters had voted many years ago, because the over billion dollars that the state is getting. So that's going to be a lot more income for the town, and it will come before you get the tax bills in October, so will that lower the tax rate?
As far as, okay, you, you voted to appropriate that money for the school already, so that, the school part won't matter. As far as the state revenue, that's, that's a revenue that hit us at tax commitment, that will make a difference. I would assume, based on 5%, that we will probably go down in tax rate if everything passes.
Additional comments or questions? Charlie?
I have no idea what condition the HVAC system is in the town hall.
You don't have it.
There's got to be some type of heating system.
I'm happy to do the other.
Well, anybody that has experience with energy efficiency or anything like that will tell you that, you're talking about windows earlier in the previous article, until you do air sealing and insulation, HVAC is a waste of money, because the only thing you're doing is you're cooling off the air outside or you're heating the outside, that's it. So this would be a waste of money until you fix the rest of the building.
The boiler system is approximately how, we've got two of them, they've got to be.
We've had nothing but problems.
They're at least 20, at least 20 years old, they're a day from any of them, and they can be lit regularly, and they often run late. I can still remember Mr. Shields, who was the old guy, I was trying to remember. But no, that's a valid point, and hopefully, we've, you know, we've had a lot of conversation, but we're probably the one person that's not that old enough.
Well, why we put this on the floor was, the one in the meeting house itself, that very inside of our heat body gives it a year or so, and when we come up with these extra funds, we figured this was, it was time, we do this now, while we've got the money to do it, and we're going to work on the building at the same time to do exactly what you were talking about.
Additional comments or questions on Article 28? Charlie, is it going to?
What will happen, if you do it in that order, is now you change your calculations for load for your heating system sizing, which will change the cost for utilization. So once again, putting the cart before the horse, by just going and throwing the heating system in there based on the condition of the building now, versus improving the condition of the building, so that you may be able to install a smaller, more efficient lighting system.
I understand that, and what we're looking at is, you know, really, what we're going to be able to do to improve it, still the building is not a huge, I mean, windows, I guess that's huge, but, you know, at the end of the day, plus we, that would be a huge undertaking to do what you're talking about, but what we did is we took out, we had our heat guy come in and give us advice on the system, and we need what we've got.
Remember that old Midas line, pay me now or pay me later for your muffler?
Yeah.
It applies here.
Other comments or questions on Article 28? Dennis?
I just want to say, it's been commented a few times about the school giving back $500,000, and so we figured we'd take this money to do things. The school not needing this $500,000, it really, the money really belongs to the people, and so it's not free money. It's money that we've been taxed on, we're going to continue to be taxed on, and the amount of new revenue that comes into this town, the tax rate should be going down anyway. We put out an estimated 200 building permits last year, obviously, that's a lot of revenue. And I think, I'm not against doing the improvements. I just think that $5,000 to have an electrician hooked up to furnaces is pretty extensive.
Additional comments or questions? Paul, Article 28.
Can the anticipated project be crafted realistically to fall within 20,000, or would we just want to be authorizing a project that really can't start because it's not well-funded?
There's not a lot of money to cover the estimates right now, if you're a few hundred dollars short just on the furnaces, all, and then the electrical part, all that, so pretty much blind written in the article, you're saying we can't do it.
And then the second question is, what is the, I mean, air conditioning, one could say, gee, that's a luxury, or gee, you know, it is, but in terms of, I'm also hearing that there's a problem with the existing heating system, that, I mean, is that life support at this point, or, or, you know, where do we stand? What's the urgency of this project, I guess, about getting it?
The, the heating system in the, I mean, does itself, is on its way now, there aren't many issues with it. So I have, like, the, um, the muscle Valtech, we were talking about maybe going to some of those wall, AC unit, AC units, we had an issue with the, I don't think, the standby generator, we're hooked up, we don't power that up, so then we were going to have to do all that stuff, so we, he said, but yeah, with the system, that will go in place of what we have now, not great system, that will also do high air conditioning. We have, we have an issue with Michelle's office, he was going to get heat, so we had him in there to check out the ductwork system, at the same time we felt that furnace was aged, that this would be a project that gets it all done at once. And that, that side of the building, you know, we're talking windows, because that building's not very able.
And as far as the air conditioning, I agree, in some cases, we can't be a luxury bar, server room, our server room, in the middle hallway between offices, those, you know, the server room, the middle between where my office is and Michelle, there's no windows, no ventilation, we're coming down there with fans in there, keep that server where everything is cooled down on Sunday. And there are air filters, not even the water, but that's not.
So if this project goes, is funded at 20, and we understand that perhaps there's a need for greater insulation efforts in the building at large, I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I'm hearing, and that would be a good idea to do that before, I mean, this other stuff in the first place. Is there any value that can be taken from funding this project at the stated 20, and up to and including maybe using it for something slightly different, but aimed for the same purpose as in insulation? Would that be a misuse of these funds? Instead of purchasing outright heating and/or air conditioning, you're setting up to do so in future years? I mean, I'm trying to figure out as a responsible citizen of the town, whether there's any point to throwing 20 at it, or do we shoot for 25, or better luck next year?
So we have to stick quotes, we're trying to welcome to look at, and they give a detail that is beyond my range, or, they total $20,548, two quotes that nothing validates or return, with the statement at the bottom about the electrical to be done by others, so that's where the number came from, so. But you're all the way through the common, the electrical may not be $500, estimated in the amount, you're maybe.
Yeah, if it's not spent, it returns to undesignated funds.
We've got five grand.
Yeah, that we, we don't know, this quote was given to us, what, three months ago? You know, we don't know, a couple months ago, though, you know, there's going to be some more stress as well.
I wish I could say that this conversation has given me clarity. Thank you.
Ted, additional comments or questions on Article 28?
Yeah, I just want to say, as far as insulation, when I was selecting, we put vinyl siding on every wall that has vinyl siding on it, has been insulated. The only walls in the building that haven't been insulated are the ones that don't have vinyl siding. We also spent a lot of money on windows, so the remaining windows, if they're replaced, then all the windows will be fairly new from 10, uh, 2010 on, so they're not the real single pain with the lead weights and everything else anymore. Also, the roof, we did when I was there, and there was a lot of issues in the roof on the new part of the town hall, and that was insulated, and new plywood was put down before the new shingles were put on. So the only remaining part of the building is the parts that do not have vinyl siding.
Other comments or questions on Article 28? Dennis?
My only real issue with this volatile was you're doing two-thirds of the town hall, and I didn't understand why the library wasn't included as part of the building, why you need to do all three at the same time with the heating and the air conditioning. I asked that question, and I was told that if the library wanted air conditioning, she would have asked for it, and I took it upon myself to ask her about that afterwards, and she said she never thought that the town would ever go along with putting air conditioning in these buildings, otherwise she wouldn't, so that's, that's my big intention.
Other comments or questions on Article 28? Nancy?
Now, under municipal management, we do have a $25,000 line for town hall building maintenance, is this, is this usually all expended?
Well, pretty close, Ann, let me tell you what happened yesterday. So, no, it's wrong. So yesterday about 9:30, it's not a problem, it's been answered by. Yesterday about 9:30, a power went out from the town hall. A generator did not keep on, we were told there was an Acton metro, we made it come out, we made a lot more, and we got, Ed Walsh came out and worked on the generator for some time, started oil, break stuff in the, thank you. Did everybody know, did the generator company out there, the electricity company, the electrician operation, now it's two-thirds, we still have no power, it's been all day. It had nothing to do with the Acton metro, we found out at 2:00. The electrician found out that there's a short in the building between the election hall and the library, so the generator kept shutting off because of that short. The generator will only work when that one breaker is off, so there's a serious shortage on that breaker. It's going to be a big project for him to redo and relive, so I don't recommend you use a lot of that building maintenance account until we get to that, because right now, you can't use the electricity, you can't use that short out. So we don't really have much cushion of that anyways, between the cleaning and the lawn service, the shoveling, so it's usually pretty well-spent anyways, but it's going to have an issue with it all.
Other questions or comments on Article 28? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt an amended amount of money, $20,000 for purchase and installation of a new HVAC system. Now, what's going to happen? Well, let's vote on this, and then we'll figure out what we're going to do, Dennis. All those in favor of the motion, which is to raise and appropriate $20,000, please raise your blue cards. Yes, what's your?
If we vote to not.
Yes. It's an amended version, so we're going to go back and see if there's a motion to go for 25, okay? That's what's going to happen. So let's go back to voting. All those in favor of adopting Article 28 as amended at $20,000, please raise your blue cards. If you can, hands down those opposed. Okay, the amended version fails to pass, does not pass. So now we're looking at, I need a motion still. Dennis?
Make the motion to approve Article 28 as written.
Okay. A motion, is it her second? Chris seconds it? It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 28 as written. Other questions or comments?
I'll vote early.
You're voting early. There's no early voting. Okay, any comments or questions on Article 28 as rephrased? Yes, sir. Yep.
Once you vote on, you've voted, you've voted amended, that amount, that hasn't changed?
No, we voted down the amendment.
I know, but I'm saying.
Okay.
If that motion wasn't amended.
Yeah.
And it passed.
Yeah.
Then the other article, the main article, we would pass as amended.
Yes, that's correct. I mean, we took a, as amended, yes, we took a shortcut here, and we took an amended motion to start on, other than what was proposed, which is okay. Paul, help us out.
Technically speaking, we didn't have a motion on the floor, and then it was amended. We actually came up with a main motion. So currently, we have no main motion.
We do now, because we just.
Well, we just.
Okay. What I'm, what I'm saying is that it's okay on an amendment to make, the main motion an amendment.
We could, we could shortcut a reconsideration of the many votes who.
I will show you, I will, I will show you in the main operator's manual where it says you can make a motion.
We can do what we're doing, but not on the grounds that we're stated.
Okay, all right. Anybody else want to argue? Okay, so our motion on Article 28 is to adopt the article at $25,000. Are there any additional comments or questions? All those in favor of that motion, please raise your blue cards. If you can, hands down those opposed. Article 28 is adopted at $25,000, which was, as it was written. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to establish pursuant to Title 38 MRS Section 5801, one, a capital improvement reserve fund for town hall parking lot reconstruction and to raise and appropriate $75,000 for same. Board of Selectmen recommend approval. Warren Finance Committee recommends ought not to pass. Dennis?
I make a motion to approve Article 29 as written.
Okay, again, I'm just, you know, if you are in favor of the Warren Finance Committee's recommendation, your option here is to vote no. The motion is, has it been seconded? Chris seconds. The motion on Article 29 is to adopt the article as written. Dennis, do you have any comments or questions?
I have a question. Mr. Chairman, the Warren Finance, the reason why the Warren Finance voted against this, because the Sleutmen couldn't give us any plan on what the future reconstruction was going to be done on the parking lot, and we thought that until they came up with some. And we thought that until they came up with some kind of a presentation, put them on the interstate with the tax base.
Additional comments or questions? Charlie?
I'd like to know what parking lot are we talking about?
Can anyone answer the question, what parking lot are we talking about?
So we're looking at, maybe you can park all of the pull-ups in town hall. Okay, not really.
Well, there's the one that, there's the parking area that's in front of the town hall, front door and the library. And then there's parking lot that's between the church.
The church is in our park.
Correct. That's, I just want clarification. You're talking $75,000 just for that section that's in front of.
I'll explain, okay? What it was, was from the church parking lot down, okay? Redoing all that, take, making the parking area by the, reconfigure the parking lot down by where all the codes. Looking at, make the ballpark a lot down by the old fire, the fire station.
You don't like this site building there?
Yes, exactly. We're talking about taking that L.O., office demo in that building and making parking lot down there. That's why this number is where it's at, right?
But it's all just possible?
Well, if you throw it in, I'm sure it'll happen.
Other comments or questions? All right. This is the only article of all the pigeonholes you try and plug money into. But this is a specific statute that you recommended. And that statute reads, "A fund for financing the acquisition or reconstruction of a specific item or type of improvement." And it just here, it's not, it's not specified what it's called. This one says you need a specific item or specific type. Other comments or questions on Article 29? Nancy?
In your proposed budget, here it says $65,000 in the parking lot reserve. Is that what's currently in it so that this would be in addition to that?
I'm sorry, one second.
The question Nancy says is there currently 65 in the parking lot reserve?
There is no money in the parking lot reserve.
So this budget, you're thinking about, this is just all proposed. None of it is current. It's actually a lot of things. Okay, all right. Okay, but it says 65 in there. And then you've got 75 in your one, I believe.
We didn't grab anything. We just think that she can clarify because she doesn't grab control. That's the type of thing.
Additional questions or comments? Chief?
Just as a point, we do respond to about a dozen slipshirts and balls because of the current state of the town hall. I've discussed that a lot.
Okay, I heard something from, I just, I'm looking for clarification. Demoing the old fire department, is that included in this? Because you mentioned that. I think that would be a big issue, bigger issue that's being discussed.
That's why we said it would be possible. To make the adjustments to the parking lot that are needed by the library and stuff, that would probably actually be done. So with the money we have right now, between reclaiming, reserving, ground, all some areas.
Hold it, we got a conversation going on. We need it. Okay, go ahead.
We believe that $75,000 doesn't go far anymore, so we could run that pretty easy.
Okay, additional comments or questions? Go ahead, yes, sir.
Just a quick question to, I noticed that the tractor trailers being parked there on the weekends, has that been included into the base that would have to be done? Because that's really what lowered down, it's going to do a whole lot more damage in corners.
That's something we're going to have to look at, whether or not we ought to let that happen anymore or not. Like a truck stop.
No, no, I get that, but I'm just saying that if you're going to allow it to park there, then.
Well, obviously, whatever improvements that we're doing on parking lot, we want to be, we want them to work just like we're doing the road project. The road commissions will be in charge of that.
Additional comments or questions on Article 29?
This is a little misleading. What people need to understand is they're going to put this money into a reserve account. And so the work that you're talking about isn't going to be done this year anyway. Unless you go to a special town meeting. In reality, they have no plan written down exactly what they're going to do. And I think it's incumbent on the selectmen if they want us to give thousands of dollars to be able to put it in writing and tell us what they want to lose money.
Additional comments or questions? Paul on Article 29?
I'm reading here that raised, it says raised and appropriate. So in theory, once that money's in there, they can do whatever they want with it for this purpose, regardless of whether or not there'd be another town meeting to approve specifics.
To be in the capital reserve, does that mean you're deserving the money?
Okay, the treasurer has a comment on this.
So ideally, that, I mean, that capital reserve, we're preserving it for its future use, whether it gets used this year, the Holy Party gets used this year, whether it gets used next year. There's none enough. Speaking with the road commissioner that takes care of the parking lot there, he'd like to see it done sooner than later because it's running his trucks. So it could be used this year.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Yes?
Yeah, we're laying like District 1. I take care of the parking lot. We've got to pay the bids, so man, I pay the contract, look at it and see what you can do with something about $1,000. And what we're making, and we'll come back. I have a month, you know, we're going to have to do something next year because I'm going to have the money that we need to do it, do it the right way.
Okay, I'm also concerned about the demoing the old fire station. Where's, what's going to happen? Don't go yet. Are you the one that's going to demo the old fire station? I'm not opposed to this.
We kind of made that decision.
I know that, I understand that. I know. Well, make sure everybody understands what might happen here.
I mean, like you said, we have to go down that road. Something we have to talk about, but it'd be nice to give us more parking. We'll deal with some more stuffs going on, and so I think it'd be better for everybody.
Just don't want everybody to be shocked, just see that's gone something. Joyce?
I am the chairman of the capital improvements committee. The $75,000 is going into a capital reserve account. Reserve means for the designation parking lot. This is what we're talking about, correct?
Correct.
So this would be for the parking lot. Now, we talked very briefly. Kim is also on the capital improvement committee, and she can verify. This could turn into a phased job. Phase one, well, actually, Ricky, I complained to Rob and he was supposed to put.
Joyce talked to me. Joyce, I'm in conversation.
Robin was supposed to put a flower pot up.
We'll yell at Robin.
I was tripped over a place where I would do it like that. Maybe we would have, okay, well, X, Y, Z needs to be done first. Then you go to phase two, phase three. Maybe we look at the correct parking. Where have these incidents been where people have fallen or tripped? But it can be phased. That could be two, three years, who knows? One year. And I don't believe from our, these are conversations, that the old fire building has actually come to a fourth grade. We know from the insurance company, it's not a gym anymore. You know, that's gone. But we, that has not raised to the level. Tonight, we discuss how different, but it could be a phase program.
Additional comments or questions? Willie, you have more to say?
Just a little thing. More, I've been thinking about this all along. I think we were through something this year. I think our best approach would be right around town hall, just like the back, or Rick said. It's getting bad. And I don't think the slippery fall has anything to do with the snowplows, the drawfall by the library and all the cars. So I think if we could do it in front of the town hall this year, I think we'd be ahead. We could talk about the fire station pot next year down by the code enforcement house. It's getting pretty bad, so we're going to set that and we can have to share it.
Additional comments or questions on Article 29? See now, the motion is to adopt the articles written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 29 is adopted as written. Article 30, see if the town will vote to appropriate from the undesigned fund, $175,194 for the payoff of the salt-sanched building. Selectmen recommend approval of the article. War and Finance Committee is saying, is there a motion on Article 30?
Make a motion to accept Article 30 as written.
The move is seconded by Chris Whitman to adopt Article 30 as written. Other questions or comments on Article 30? See now, the motion is to adopt Article 30 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 30 is adopted as written. Article 31, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $3,259 for health and welfare. This includes $259 for the health offer stipend and $3,000 for general assistance. Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. War and Finance Committee is saying, is there a motion on Article 31?
I'd make a motion to accept Article 31 as written.
Seconded by Chris Whitman, the move is seconded to adopt Article 31 as written. Nancy, question on Article 31?
Yes. Do acting residents still go to Shapley to apply for general assistance?
If they want to go out of actual application, yes. I would say that based on your salary being in acting, most people don't qualify for general assistance. They're totally, they're totally neighbors. So I would say at last year, in a higher county, they could probably pay up less than five hours for actual general assistance.
So we do compensate Shapley for any work that they do?
If they want to go out of actual application, but look at the GA numbers, as you may recall, and the standards are high for most people in this area. So I tried to give us other neighbors to determine who's qualified for it. Hard to get general assistance in acting Shapley, but it works around the town based on the boundaries. And things on the state.
So the lower tier has to be extremely low to apply for it?
Yes, and most of our elderly or single people, they're not qualified for it. Unless you have, you know, a nursing home or you have, you know, different kids. It's hard to qualify to stay in general assistance.
How much did you say we paid Shapley for administrative?
I mean, I'm going to say between five and 10 hours minimum. Most people that come to us for help, especially in one-time situations, we'll just help them out and make it so they're just no questions. That has no paperwork. If you have somebody that has asked two or three or four or five times for help out of neighbors, it's about a second or third time we're giving them fill out an application for general assistance. We get a reimbursement from the state for 50% of general assistance, but.
And what about fuel, oil, is that still?
So same thing. So there's few assistance for your county. There's me too, we get donations. Again, our neighbors, our neighbors, all the neighbors in the state. We have a church that sends us a donation every year. So we just take it on a one-on-one basis. This town, especially more than nearly 20, if anybody needs anything, you must go out and look for that.
Am I misremembering that we used to provide fuel, oil, general assistance?
We can, yes, car, emergency, but again, it's income-based. It's difficult for most people.
Additional questions on Article 31? Motion on Article 31 is to adopt the article as recommended by the selectmen and as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 31 is adopted as written. Article 32, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $704,800 for wages and operation expenses of the fire rescue department. Wages, taxes, and benefits are $573,350. Operational expenses $130,730. For selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. War and Finance Committee recommends adopting articles written. Is there a motion? Dennis?
I make a motion to approve Article 32 as written.
Is there a second? Chris Whitman seconds the motion on Article 32, which is to adopt the article as written. Other questions or comments on Article 32?
Yes, I do to the chief.
Are you?
Comments? Maybe a question?
Who's there? Dennis, are you asking a question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
The rate of pay that we are paying our EMTs, firefighters, the junior firefighters is honestly embarrassing. I have stated this now for a couple of years. We have full-time EMT slash firefighters that were paying around $20 an hour. Yeah, okay.
Unless we pass this.
And the junior firefighters basically getting their wage. And Rick will attest that what I'm saying is true. The amount of training that these kids go through, either through the fire department or through the vote. Firefighter one, obviously is taught by Ricky's father. And he's going to be a good reputation down there with the kids. I think it's terrible. And I would ask, and I know that you try to be conservative and you're told to try to keep wages down and things like that, but she is an employee. Sharon Anderson, I don't know her name, I don't.
Jackson.
But for what she and other ones like her have to be, the training they have to go through is unbelievable. And probably that's one of the benefits of my granddaughter doing what she's done for the last few years with the training that she has to go through to qualify. It's an enormous amount of work physically and mentally. And I would ask, even with this budget passing the way it is, if you would consider increasing these people's pay by a couple of dollars an hour. When these junior firemen can work at a restaurant for 15, being a hostess or whatever, it just makes no sense that all they have to go through to get $12 an hour. And I think it discourages people to do anything like this.
Additional comments or questions? Chief, now's your chance.
Yeah, so I'm not going to disagree with Dennis. A lot of my people are going to agree. This is the first budget that I've actually been able to submit what I want. Because of COVID, I was given zero increase in the budget before that I inherited from my predecessor. So this is my first budget. Included in this budget are raises for the firefighting paramedics. So I have education and training associated with stuff like this. So we did a market analysis, I surveyed all the towns around us. I analyzed what they were being paid. Instead of bringing this actually to the top tier, I brought us to, you know, about 75%, which I thought was fair for a town like Captain. And we are going to look at wages constantly. We try to keep with the trends, the societal trend, I would call it, from the 12, 10, $12 an hour minimum wage to 15 is something that greatly jumped. And so you're going to see that ripple take a while to catch up. Everybody's wages are going to go up because the base wage has gone up. And so that's going to take a little while, but it is something that I'm looking at. Normally, I give a big grand speech, but I'm going to keep it way shorter. We did 500 calls last year, which is a 100 call increase, or 500 calls, 100 call increase from the year before. And as of this morning, I think we're at 250 or 249. So we continue to get busier. COVID kind of clamped down a lot of my plans. But you're going to see us out and more active in the community. You're going to see us more active in the schools. And if anybody needs anything, all my information is on the town's website and our website. So shoot me an email and I'm happy to help. I appreciate it very much, so all of your support. Thank you.
Other comments or questions on Article 32? Yes?
I would like to put this out there because before we spend this ARBA money, it's coming to all of you folks. It's going to happen to help appearing on what you folks want to see this money be today. That fire department and those wages are something that you can consider.
So Art, explain what ARBA money is.
American Rescue Fund, these are the COVID funds that are coming to the town.
And that all comes to the town with some function. All right, other comments or questions? Kelly, on Article 32?
As a representative of MNA, we supporter EMS completely and openly. We feel that they need to be paid even higher than what the ARBA chief has said. Because to be honest with you, rural is, and it's going to happen. As a loss of good old hospital, which we all know, we have just an emergency room there now. We are going to rely more and more on our firefighters and our paramedics to be at your door trying to help you in this case of emergency. And it may take you 35, 40 minutes to get to the closest hospital. You're going to need to support your EMS with further training and further education to make sure that they're taking care of this community well. So MNA does support any sort of funding to the EMS community.
Thank you. Other comments or questions on Article 32? Dennis?
I would like to make an amendment to the article.
You can't go up now, this is a.
I'm going to increase the dollar amount, I appreciate that. But we can give a directive to the chief. And I would amend. And I would amend this warrant article to say that employees, uh, ENT slash firefighters at the, uh, fire department get a $2 an hour increase. And if this money, this is a part of it, and if this money that the fire chief has doesn't make it for the year because of this, then we can have a special town meeting and play a time to give these individuals money.
So, Dennis, I'm not exactly sure what your amendment is, but that?
My amendment is that the, the part of the town meeting is asking, uh, for a $2 an hour increase for the employees.
That's not your name to this?
Yes, it is. It absolutely is. Because of what it costs for the wages and the operation of the fire station.
It's not specific to the wages paid to the people. It's part of this, but it's not the article. You're expanding the article beyond what its scope is.
Town meeting, that's the right to do what they want to do. If they want amendments to give pay increases, they can, as long as they don't increase the dollar amount, the bottom line. That's how it works.
Well, maybe that's how you think it works, but this is not, that's how I think it works. It's expand, it's expanding the scope of this thing beyond what was generally perceived to be within the purview. It's not, it's one of the things.
I will draw.
It's not, thank you. Additional comments or questions? Yes, sir?
Just as a general point of reference, if someone could explain to me, because earlier in the meeting, we could not amend things as simple as changing a letter. And then we've gone on to amend amounts from 25 to 20. I think we've expended a lot of, a lot of time on amendments. Either we can or we can't. Unless it's not that simple, then I need to know why, please.
Okay, so as far as articles go, and the main moderators here, they talk a lot about the scope of the article. And what's the things that are germane? You can't take an article and blow it up into something that it was not. They offer examples of that. Uh, so part of my job is to determine that we stay within the scope of the article and we don't make it something that it wasn't intended to be. Because people who choose not, the whole thing of scope is, if you choose not to come here to this meeting because you read the warrant, then you have a right enough to go fishing instead of being, because you know that it is not going to get blown up. And it's something that you chose not to participate in. That's the whole thing. It's determined by a court case in York in 1869.
But again, as earlier on, we were talking about whether we had letters and periods and commas, and we didn't proceed with that.
The zoning then.
We didn't proceed. And that's a clerical issue. And then we spent a lot of time on 25 versus 20. I don't want to waste any more time with people, but I think either we do it or we don't.
Zoning amendments, let me explain. Zoning amendments basically at a public hearing. So typically, the process for zoning is you don't amend it on town hall. You vote yes or no. If you don't like it, you vote no. They go, that's what happened today. You go, I can redo it. Okay, that's what we do with zoning amendments. Okay, thank you.
The monetary number can go down.
Yes, so, so we won't go there. All right, okay. So Article 32. Any other additional comments or questions on Article 32? Okay, the motion is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of adopting Article 32 as written, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 32 is adopted as written. Article 33. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $25,000 for the purchase and installation of a new generator for the fire rescue department. For the Selectmen recommend approval of the article. Warren Finance Committee recommends ought not to pass, 5 to 1. Is there a motion on Article 33?
I make a motion, Article 33 passes as written.
The movement is seconded by Chris Whitman. Then we adopt Article 33 as written. Other questions or comments on Article 33? Chief?
It's broke, we're going to fix it, it's big bad green.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Mike?
Mike Wong. Uh, my question is basically to the chief. I see those marks on this chief. You're asking us to give you $25,000 for a generator, which I totally support. But what are we spending the $25,000 on? Is that for this generator? Does that include new wiring or what does it entail?
Go ahead, take your, left, left of the mic.
So the way the warrant system works, I can't give you that full quote. I have quotes. So the problem ran into you, which is the, should we have Warren Finance? Why Warren Finance says ought not to pass is because I have to submit my budget numbers to January. Nobody I called said, I'll give you a quote that's good for July. It lasted, especially during COVID, okay? So I said, give me a ballpark. So I went around, talked to different companies, applied for recommendations. They came up, looked at it, gave me an idea of what we needed to do. That was another we came up with. Guess what happened already? It's gone up. So we're going to have to make adjustments. But what that money will cover will be based on recognition of the generator company. We're not just purchasing a generator, plotting to that. It becomes this total replacement that we are dirty ready.
Yep. Go ahead, Mike.
So you're going to have a company come in and install the generator, do whatever is necessary to do. Make your work. Okay, that's what I want. Yeah. That's Article 1.
Other questions or comments? Yes, sir, on Article 33?
I don't normally do this kind of thing, but I want to say that this offense are rescuing the fire department's ability to respond to our purchases. We know it's worth barely thinking that someone needed to pick up the phone and call them. So I am voting in favor of this money for general assistance.
Other comments or questions on Article 33?
There's one place in the town of Acton, well, two places in the town of Acton. Stuff goes down, colleges, high school, and you should be able to count off the pile. Fire station with the school. And so right now, we only got one of those.
Other comments or questions on Article 33? Motion is to adopt Article 33 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 33 is adopted as written. Article 34, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $58,333 for public safety to be expended as follows. Streetlights, animal control, communications, emergency management. Totals $58,333. For the Selectmen recommend approval. Warren Finance Committee recommends the same. Is there a motion on Article 34?
I make a motion to approve Article 34 as written.
Movement seconded by Mike to adopt Article 34 as written. Other questions or comments on Article 34? Nancy?
Do we share the animal control officer with Chapley?
Yeah.
Well, we don't share him.
You have to pay one.
He holds two positions. He holds two positions, so it's not a shared position.
Okay.
I guess my other question is, we're budgeting $500 a year for a telephone. Don't we, wouldn't that be a sharing?
There's a question about, Nancy's looking at the detailed budget, $500?
Telephone.
Yeah, but it's telephone. We share.
And so he's paying like $1,000 a year for a phone?
Um, I don't know. I guess people pay like $10 a month.
All right, we're looking for the detail here.
This is extremely excessive to me.
Other questions or comments while they're looking on Article?
$100 a month, sorry, $100 a month on 1200. You're going to pay $100 a month on 1200 a year.
So what do you think? Our, our phones, we bump our phones together.
Jade, get closer to the mic.
We lump. Very loud.
I know, I know.
Uh, we lump our phones together to save money. So the fire rescue's phones, like our, we have remote data points and stuff like that to send EKGs to the hospital and track our calls and like that. And the ACO's phone all comes together. So we actually do that to save money. And I believe it's about 70, 80 bucks a month anyway that they pay. So Michelle, we get one bill, Michelle breaks it up, comes out of the appropriate accounts and all that. So where we are, that is what a smartphone costs. And he has to have GPS, he has to have all that stuff that's associated to part of his job. Just like we do. It's not a cake, I'd say he's smartphone. Yeah, he can operate his full.
Gives us a ride, sheds, gives everything.
Additional comments or questions on Article 34, Dennis? No? Other questions or comments on 34? Seeing that the motion is to adopt Article 34 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 34 is adopted as written. Article 35, see if the town will vote to pay wages and equipment for repair and maintenance of public ways according to the following schedule. There's a whole list, unless there's subjection, I am not going to read the list. I am going to read, at the bottom of that is an important note. In the event that the road commissioners, the operator of the equipment, a deduction of $27.01 will be taken from the equipment that rates listed above. Then town talks about town first, you know, cutting edges and bolts. And the buck rates are based on fuel prices up to including $4.30 per gallon. Town of Acton will pay an additional $1 per hour, 3.25 that increase per gallon for equipment utilizing diesel fuel. This will be based on the fuel price at Booney's and Chapley on each Sunday. Each such price will determine the fuel allowance for the following week's warrant. For the Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Warren Finance Committee is the same. Is there a motion, Dennis?
I make a motion to approve Article 35 as written.
The movement is seconded by Chris Whitman to approve Article 35 as written. Other questions or comments on Article 35? All those in favor of Article 35 as written, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 35 is approved as written. Article 36, see if the town will vote to raise $365,534 and appropriate $389,728 with $24,194 to be appropriated from the state LRAF funds received or resurfacing, excuse me, surfacing and reconstruction for the District One roads department. Said funds to be dispersed after a project list, including a line item budget, excuse me, line item budgeting has been presented to the Board of Selectmen to be expended as follows. District One, that's the number for winter maintenance, summer maintenance, and paving and reconstruction. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Warren Finance Committee is the same. Is there a motion, Dennis?
I make a motion to approve Article 36 as written.
Movement seconded by Chris Whitman to approve Article 36 as written. Other questions or comments on Article 36? Ted?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The LRAF funds were $80,000 before, how come we're down to 24? Did the state change it that much?
Uh, it goes down every year. Uh, and the 24, it's, it's actually 48 because we split it up.
Oh, okay, all right, so it's still half of what it used to be?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments on Article 36? Artie's behind you, Dennis? Artie?
Mr. Moderator. Yeah, I would just like to emphasize that in 2010, we purchased the RSMF software, which would grade the roads and tell us through a computer process which roads are in bad condition and everything else. Nothing ever happened with that. We redid it in 2018. We purchased the software again, it's called the Road System Management Software. And they went out and they surveyed all the roads again. They did all the things, they got it from Phil Curran, it came down from Maine. We still are not utilizing the reports that are generated off this software to tell us which roads are in the worst condition. We still use, um, favoritism right now. We don't, I just threw down a limited quote yesterday and, uh, let me tell you. Actually done.
Other comments and questions? Will?
On the RSMS?
Will, get closer to the mic.
Some classes I've took. I guess somebody left up there with the whole RSMS thing, so, um, yeah, so good. So they told us pretty much it's a waiting game right now. I think Jennifer has talked to some people and, uh, I don't know if we can get into the computers because we, something's changed. So there's a, there's a waiting game right now, so.
Yeah, so I'm not going to answer that. So, um, all the programs, right, they had staff change. But I did go back and read the 40 minutes and the chair of the road committee, I'm not sure if, um, she's still here, the last board selection meeting to discuss, um, she was going to come into the, use the town administrator's office and sit down and was going to book it over and do training so that she could take it back to the road committee. Um, yes, in their schedule, that happened. But they haven't offered any more training and no one knows that system. You're right, we did purchase it for $250. Uh, but the road commissioners are certainly welcome to come in anytime and sit down and look at it. The last time it was discussed that a, Chuck was being the chair, but wanted to come in and learn and start working with the gentleman.
Additional questions? Artie? Wasn't, didn't, wasn't the chairman of the old road committee, didn't he come in and enter all that stuff into the computer?
No, I'm referring to, um, Mr. Curlin.
I know, I know, but when, when we did this, when they did the assay of the roads and everything else in 2018, Chuck Gregory?
Yeah, we have all that information. It's all.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the computer.
Those road commissioners, someone's going to come in and everything, they need to say they want the information and they're looking for it. The state's not offering any training, so.
Well, now the state, I was just up there, state is charging, it's no more free. When you buy the software, they used to give you free support. They're not anymore.
So do they have a person in charge of this program again?
Well, Sony's taken over from Phil. I forgot what the name was that was on the thing, but, um.
We'll have to have him help pursue it, but we need a contact, somebody from there. And a guy that says he wants to come in and order and start generating reports and deciding. I mean, there are hundreds, we can come up. I can't, I'm late, so.
Other questions or comments on Article 36? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 36 is adopted as written. Article 37. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $370,534 and appropriate $394,728 of $24,194 to be appropriated from the state LRAF funds received for resurfacing and reconstruction on District Two road department. Said funds to be dispersed after a projected list, including line item budgeting has been presented to the Board of Selectmen to be expended as follows. There's a downcoming out for winter maintenance, summer maintenance, paving, and the flat ground road. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article. Warren Finance Committee recommends the same on a 5 to 1 vote. Dennis, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Article 37 as written.
Is there a second? Chris Whitman approves, the second's the motion on Article 37. Other questions or comments on Article 37?
I would like to ask when the paving's going to be done.
When the paving's going to be done?
Where, I'm sorry.
Where, okay. Adam?
Adam, District Two. Um, I'm planning on doing an ambitious project on the Langley Shores. Going in County Road with Meeslip. There's a couple culverts that need to be done there. Uh, St. Warren Road, near the school, near Baker Lane. And then if we get to do the bridge, Canal Road.
Other questions or comments?
I was talking about the paving, not just.
That's the paving, that's just paving.
But you said you're changing color.
Well, that's, I got to pave those roads afterwards. Though that's part of the paving, but there are paving those roads.
I, I guess just to be clear, Adam.
So explainingly?
No, no, I guess what I'm saying is, you're paving, are you paving the town?
I'm not paving the town.
You're changing colors and stuff like that?
No, that's a, that's a positive, but that's a paving the four roads I listed.
Okay. So that's strictly paving?
Strictly paving.
That's what that money's for?
Yes.
Is it, are you going to do shoulders with it too?
Not with the paving money, no.
No?
With the summer fund.
Think you'll be able to do that?
I hope so.
Other questions or comments on Article 37? That was a test, Adam. You best to test somebody. Uh, other comments or questions on Article 27? Dennis?
In my defense, I told Adam a week ago, uh, that having the month.
Okay, good. He needs to be up here. Artie?
Just a question of the administration. So the RSMS, where is the next step? Is it with the, the road commissioner, the road committee chairman? Is that?
Wait, I mean, again, it's the direction of whatever the board of selectmen tell me. And the last, what I'm telling you is that the last, last time it came out at the selectmen meetings was that the Glenn and I conversation got a meeting that we were going to schedule a time of day we should come in and learn. I never get given any further instructions, no.
Okay, so it's, it's just going to stay in limbo until they tell you?
The following needs to come, what they're going to do with it, I'm not going to, that's up to that and the board or the road commissioners.
Other questions or comments on Article 37? Motion on Article 37 is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 37 is adopted as written. Article 38, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $134,063 dollars for shared roads accounts to be expended as follows. Sandsault Stockpile, $163,025. Public Works Building Grounds, $21,038. Selectmen recommend approval of the article. War and Finance Committee recommends the same. Dennis, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Article 38 as written.
It's been moved and seconded by Chris Whitman to adopt Article 38 as written. Are there questions or comments on Article 38? Nancy, no?
Oh.
No?
We have, uh, several years ago, when, um, Mr. Langley stepped up as road commissioner, uh, he found that there was a pretty bad leak in that, um, building down in the storage building, and we've been putting money every year to get that fixed, and it hasn't been replaced, uh, yet, yet. And I was wondering, uh, if that was gonna happen this year or not.
Question on the roof leak? I, when he said Mr. Langley, I assumed that that you, Will?
His father.
His father, okay.
Yeah, my father found the leak there.
Okay.
Um, the past few years with Mr. Paterno, he was gonna take care of it, and, uh, yeah, some people come out and look at it, they really wanna deal with it, and we told him, "So, um, either me and Adam, uh, start calling and see if we can get something to fix it ," because I think Adam wants to put powder in there or something like that, I think, is what I'm planning.
Okay.
We gotta fix the roof, we'll do that.
Other questions or comments on Article 38? Motion on Article 38 is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 38 is passed as written. Article 39, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $125,000 for the repair of the Canal Road Bridge in conjunction with the town of Wakefield and Hampshire, replacing any, any unexpended funds to the statutory bridge and Culver Reserve Account. Board of Selectmen recommend approval as written. War and Finance Committee recommends the same on a five to one vote. Dennis, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Article 39 as written.
Is there a second? Seconded by Chris. Only because I don't remember the name of the town that it's from. Okay. Okay. Uh, we're moved and seconded to adopt the article as written. Are there questions or comments on Article 39?
Yes.
Right behind you, Dennis. We got a young lady who wants the, wants the old pine on this.
Are the DEP permits in place for this bridge?
They have the parting.
Then we don't have any plans. Then we don't have any plans if we, if we done it terminated on the main side. Uh, we have extensive problems with drainage there and runoff into the canal. The canal has to be treated exactly like any other major water body, like a lake. Uh, is everybody that's gonna be working, and I'm licensed in erosion control, and, uh, this looks pretty loose. The weight limits have been on this bridge for years. It has been ignored totally by the town of Wakefield. They're, they're running their own vehicles over it to turn around for their convenience. Uh, their vehicles weigh considerably more than the 6,000 pounds, which has been allowed. A lot of damage has been done to the underlying bridge. I'd, I'd like to see money in here to repair what we've damaged over these years by ignoring it. And, uh, and also, I mean, this is just a loose amount put in here. And we still, the previous board of selectmen had negotiated with Wakefield, and it was agreed that Acton would only pay the approach and not for the bridge because we have no control over the water, although the state line is in the middle of the water. The town has no control over water rights for that canal. It's all New Hampshire. It's all New Hampshire that has done most of the damage on it, and I, I feel that we could, if we're trying to split this, I don't think that's a fair split. Also, you gotta look into the DEP before you do any plan.
Of course we would. I mean, that's something we would do. First, we're trying to see if we can get funding, and then, you know, we're going to go through everything we're supposed to. And as far as, you know, money for repairing the, the bridge underneath, I mean, that's something that, you know, if that's what you want, if you want, that's something we would do afterwards. I mean, we need to get a bridge over it. If we don't do something, we're not gonna be able to do anything, I'm sure.
No, I, I get that. It's just if you put a bridge over it, it's gonna be a little hard to do the work under it.
Right.
And, um, we might look into what, there are some stones, the keystone has been cracked in this. It's on the National Historic Register. We have very few historic items in this town, and it would be nice to see that preserved. I know that Wakefield also had plans through their committee to do a walking path next to the canal down to the Two Horn Pond, which would be a beautiful thing for people that live in New York. But I, I'd like to see this put back to the road committee for further investigation. We've been on it for 12 years, and, and, and it is listed as one of our duties, and I, I think we're all ready to, to spend some time and look into it. Once you build a bridge, it's there for a long time. I like the fact it's a composite bridge because it lasts a lot longer. We won't have problems with concrete, but there's also a composite company in Maine that makes these bridges, and the company that we're dealing with, maybe has never done any work in Maine. So, um, I think we might wanna look at the other company in Maine that's doing these. They just did, did one recently that was featured in, on the news, I believe it was in Viprude. If not, we can find out.
The article says to raise and appropriate, you know, X amount to be in conjunction with, but it doesn't talk about who is awarded the job. You know, I'm moving this one to reconsider.
We've been spinning on wheels, I think we said 12 years on this bridge.
Twelve years.
Finally, Wakefield, we get conjunction finally with another town. They do a lot of that labor for us. The guy, Mr. Bean, comes down, meets with us, answers a bunch of questions, um, satisfied us, seems satisfied that there's a town Wakefield, they're ready to roll on this. This is, um, substantially a lot cheaper than what it could be, by hundreds of thousands of dollars, and you know what I'm talking about.
Oh, I do, I do.
And, so, you know, we're gonna look at it a couple different ways here. We can keep spinning on wheels for 12 years. Uh, but they put it on the historical, um, list. I was fully against everyone's road commissioner for some reason. I knew when the second they did that, we couldn't touch the bridge. So now we have to come up with a way to do it without touching the bridge, and this is the way to do it and keep that road open. So we can go back to the road committee and ponder for another 12 years, or we can go ahead with an agreement that we're at with Wakefield and get the job done.
I, I don't feel that you should ignore the existing bridge.
We're not ignoring it. We're trying to save the bridge, that's why we're doing what we're doing, so we're not ignoring it.
Who exactly is going to be running this for Acton? Who, who is the, who's the point first?
Well, the select...
Where does, where does, where's the bottom line for Acton and what we do? I mean, I, I feel that we're gonna be putting more money into this than we should because of Acton, if Wakefield's abusing the bridge, right?
How long do you wanna wait for us to try that?
I don't wanna wait first, I don't wanna wait at all. I feel the road committee should be going on it right now.
If the road committee spun their wheels this long, no one reasoned this is even on the table, because make your, come look, the road committee did nothing. Okay, so, we're taking advantage of something that I handed to us, a silver platter that seemed to be a very, very good deal, and the guy that's doing this, Mr. Bean, that's done these bridges, done it everywhere.
He has not done one in Maine.
He's doing one half in New Hampshire, so he do half of one in Maine. Um, he does them all over New Hampshire.
He's done it in New Hampshire, New York.
He did have good recommendations.
Yeah, he's very good.
Is this the only recommendation that we looked at?
This is the only one that came forward from Wakefield, and they said there's another bridge, and we didn't come, but...
We had, we did have, um, prices, theoretical prices, and, you know, like road bridge, and what, you know, the numbers were coming out, they were over $1 million, so we're left with about $5,000.
Well, you can always do something cheaper if you do it worse, David.
Well, no, no, you don't always...
All right, all right, wait, we're getting, we're getting off base here.
Let's get off.
Let's talk about the $125.
The $125, I would just think that you would wait, you're gonna have to do a special town meeting anyway, because you bought this, I would thought so.
No, this is it.
This is, this is the final bridge. This is the... Nobody cares exactly. Who is, who is the, the bottom line person for Acton on this bridge?
Talking about overseeing it?
Yeah.
Our district to the road commissioner, and I'm sure District One will be involved too, but the select board will be, you know, oversee that, obviously, so, yeah.
So, who would, who would, selectmen, a bottom line?
We make the big decisions.
They would sign, they would sign contracts.
Yeah, okay. Nothing's been signed so far.
No, no.
Okay. That's what we're doing.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna go with Mike?
Yes, Mr. Artie. I was at the meeting with Mr. Bean, and I thought he was very supportive. I think the town's gonna save a bunch of money, because original bid, I believe, was like $1.2 million to replace the bridge that was there. By going over it, it's a win-win for everybody. We're not gonna damage the bottom bridge. The man's been doing bridges in New York, Connecticut, New Hampshire, so I don't think he's to fly by night. I think he's gonna do it out of the work. He is gonna oversee laying a bridge, he's gonna oversee the layout for the, the runoff et cetera, the turnarounds, how work the mission's gonna do it, Wakefield's gonna be the other side. But this has been going on a lot longer than 12 years, been going on at least 20. I was meeting both town reports. If we're waiting longer, that bridge is gonna collapse. It's gonna cost the town millions to replace it the way it was. It's not just rebuilding the bridge, you have to put it back exactly the way it was. And to me, doing this with $125,000 is a no bram. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Other comments or questions on Article 39? Chief?
Three things. First one, we obviously have to have a bridge, we work with Wakefield a lot, they work with us, they're awesome. I think they think we're awesome.
Ah. Second point I wanted to make was that, this isn't the first day this number showed up.
There's about, I don't know, a lot of meetings that happened before this that everybody should be involved in, so you would know and have a better understanding of the stuff that's being presented at town hall if you've been active in the article. It's on YouTube, you can attend the meetings, everybody here's emails available, they all email people back, and we see they're gonna be back, and I know I get everybody back. So, saving your questions for town hall when there's all this stuff that's presented ahead of time is only to your detriment, you know? So try to be more involved, go up into stuff, and be a better informed citizen. That's my personal opinion.
It's almost your aim, chief.
Yes, and I would like to move the question because...
I want, I think, don't we wanna hear from the road commissioner first? Chief, I don't want to ignore your input. We don't want to, we do. Go ahead.
I would be there all the time, overseeing things. I spoke with Mr. Bean, he's gonna be doing start to finish, but I will be there making sure everything's done properly. Um, my son and I expected that bridge the other day, it's a major crack in it. We'd like to save that bridge and be able to put that new one over it and keep it that way, and not lose that historic bridge that we have.
Dennis, are you gonna talk about this, or you...
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I wanna pass that.
I want a second. It was a motion to move the...
You were in the mic with the... Which I ignored, uh, so...
I'm second.
All right, are you still okay with the motion, chief?
Yeah.
Okay, we gotta vote this one down, Dennis, first or up, up or down. So the motion was to end debate on this. We needed two thirds, it's been seconded, we needed two thirds. So all those in favor of any debate on Item 39, Article 39, please, okay? Those opposed? Everybody hustle, raise your cards. Okay, we've ended debate, we're gonna vote on Article 39. The motion is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 39 is adopted as written. Article 40, see if the town will vote to appropriate from the undesignated fund $75,000 to the statutory bridge slash Culver Reserve Account. Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. War and Finance Committee recommends ought not to pass forward to... Dennis?
I make a motion to approve Article 40 as written.
Is there a second? So moved and seconded by young Mr. Galan in the back, uh, to approve the article as written. Are there questions or comments on Article 40? Nancy?
So, this is money that we're putting forward for, um, repairs to other bridges, possibly road bridge or something like that. Um, in terms of that, um, the $125,000 we just appropriated for the repair of Canal Road, this is a final bottom line price that we have gotten from the people that are going to do it. Is that correct?
That's correct, for $217,000.
And split that.
Split that and put a little bit, about 10% in there to appropriate.
$18,000 for our part of the bridge, and $16,500 for what we call missile, this stuff in case we come into some issues.
All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments on Article 40? Dennis?
I, I just find this a little disturbing, that the selectmen want to take $75,000, a lot of money, um, when just a few months ago, uh, through extensive my work, uh, with by the chief, uh, the road commissioners and the road committee, uh, we had a chance for a grant over $100,000 that they were, weren't willing to sign, uh, so we could have that money.
Other comments or questions on Article 40? David, you wanna comment on that?
The reason why we didn't sign that contract was, um, there was an influx of the people who called and their concerns, what they're being vague, what we were actually doing, and we could no longer ask, so it was something that we were stuck in. Uh, this article right here, um, the $75,000 is, uh, part of, um, $500,000, they had a school, uh, keep up, keep, keep back in the time of Acton. And, uh, we figured, for years and years and years, we've had, um, between road committees and individuals, what the bridges worked on, wanted to know why there wasn't a bridge, bridge account, reserve account, so we found an opportunity where we had $75,000 without raising the tax rate, to create one, because, you know, we do know a road bridge needs to be done, and, and what I'm saying is, with this account here, uh, if we have, if we're designing West Shore Drive or, um, road bridge, we have the money to do so.
Other comments?
I was gonna say, I did vote, you know, for what Dennis said we all voted against. I, you know, I did vote to, you know, try to, you know, I'm just saying, and, you know, I'm the one that pushed the $75,000, you know, because we do need to put some money aside for bridges, and they're not cheap, and, you know, so that's...
I'm not against that at all, we do have a, an account already for capital improvement for bridges. Uh, my whole issue was, uh, there's a possibility for well over $100,000 that we wouldn't have to pay for locally, and, just to be very clear, most of the concerns about this, uh, bridge down to Square Farm, which will be different non, uh, though it's non-residency, that they didn't live here in Acton, or it was from Shaq, like, uh, most of them, that's where most of the links came from.
Additional comments or questions on Article...
I think if the phone calls I have, because people on West Shore Drive were very concerned about that column.
Other questions or comments on Article 40? The motion is to adopt Article 40 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 40 is adopted as written. Article 41, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $311,470 for the operation of the transfer station. Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. War and Finance Committee recommends the same. Dennis is...
I make a motion to approve Article 41 as written.
Is there a second? Young Mr. Galan seconds the motion on Article 41 to approve the article as written. Other questions or comments on Article 41? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt Article 41 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Make your hands down those opposed. Article 41 is adopted as written. Article 42, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $15,500 for installing fencing and a new concrete pad at the transfer station. Selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Warrant finance committee recommends the same. Is there a motion on Article 42? Dennis?
I make a motion to approve Article 42 as written.
A move is a second on Article 42. Mr. Galan makes a motion to second Article 42. The motion is to adopt the article as written. Other questions or comments on Article 42? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt Article 42 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article 42 is passed as written. Article 43, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $250 for conservation and forestry committee. Selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Warrant finance committee recommends the same. Is there a motion? Dennis?
I make a motion to approve Article 42 as written.
It's been moved and seconded to... To adopt Article 43 as written. Are there questions or comments on Article 43? Seeing none. Chief, you're voting then. No early voting. All right, the motion on Article 43 is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article 43 is passed as written. Article 44, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $1,077 for planning and development to be expected as a forester stipend. Selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Warrant finance committee has the same recommendation. Dennis, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Article 46 as written.
44, regardless of...
44, I'm moving along.
Okay.
I'm just moving along.
Thank you. So your motion is...
Article 44.
As written?
As written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Galan makes a second to the motion. The article, is there any comments or questions?
Yes, yes, Mr. Martin.
I'm losing my...
When you read fast like that, you confuse me.
I haven't.
All right, so what do you see?
Slow down.
Yeah.
Article 45, are there questions or comments on Article 45? Mary, no.
44.
No, I'm off stage. We're on 44. We're on Article 44. The motion is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article 44 is adopted as written.
Point of order?
Yes, Mary.
Can I do a blanket 45 through 69 to approve the articles as written?
I, I know this is awful, coming through this, I would rather not do that, because we don't know what is allowed.
Mr. Moderator, make that recommendation, that we do that, I'm beginning to be concerned with some citizens in here. I really don't want to have this one word today.
Mr. Moderator, one order. I agree, what Mary said, because everything from there to there is considered donations. But my problem I have is for the last warrant article, which is a separate issue, and so I would...
So I'm looking for a motion to lump a bunch of them together.
I made a motion to lump 45 through 68.
I'm second, Dennis.
Okay, so now, let's talk about, this is a procedural motion. Does anybody object to doing that? That means we're essentially, we're burying any specific concerns we're debating about all of those articles, which are mostly social service, community, and that part, right? We're going to throw them all in. Hearing none, so we're going to vote on lumping all of these together, we needed two thirds vote. Paul, you going to talk about that?
Of course.
Okay, so, just in terms of, things to talk about, I am, I'm just looking at the recommendations. There's, I'm looking at Article 56 that says, ought not to pass. Does anyone have any concerns that they might want to talk about before we do this? Article 60 ought not to pass. I'll stop there, but, I mean, there's, they're not all the same recommendations, is my point. Initially, and you know why we broke them out, because, gee, people wanted to jumble money around and not a good thing, so they're broken out separately. If the town body wants to say, yeah, we're good with all of this, then it's fine, but to know upfront that they don't all have the same considerations and the same recommendations.
And there may be somebody in this room who wants to talk about one of these things, so we're not going to bury that. I don't like it, but I'm about to fall down here, so, so I guess I'm okay with it.
Is possible if somebody has an objection to one article, that they can pull that one article out, back and forth on that one article?
That's a good way to do it. So does anybody object to any specific article here, that they felt like they wanted to say something about it, or complain or do something?
Then it'll come out of the group, we can get the rest of them in, and just talk about the ones that people have concerns about.
Okay, I see nobody proposing a specific article, so we're now running from Article 45 to...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Joyce, yep?
Article 61.
61.
Okay, Article 61 is, well, of Shenley, there doesn't seem to be any debate about that from the finance committee. Do you want to talk about it?
Wait, not right now, wait a minute, is that what you're saying? Okay, so we're going to take out Article 61.
Did that fail?
No, we didn't vote on it.
We're voting on the motion, is that a common vote, it's mine, on 45, this will be seconded by the committee?
Yes, we're going to vote on that. So we need to vote on that, that needs a two-thirds vote. Do you have a...
And you're going to set aside Article 61?
We're going to vote.
That was not supposed to propose, yet the law was proposed. Too many of them, they want, she wants it, she's committed...
Or she wants, and she can stand up right now and make an amendment to the motion, that's what would happen. Joyce, do you want to amend it? Okay, I see Joyce saying no.
I think she's surrendering.
All right, so the motion is to lump all the articles, 45 through 68, into one. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your cards. With his wayman, Paul, it is not, 69 is, we didn't want to lump 69 into that.
Motion was 68.
68, Paul. 68, second from the end.
Even though, a lot of the donations that went along with that...
Well, we just, they wanted to lump all of these into one package, Paul. 64.
I misunderstood, so this is not per se, chair of the connotations, this is just the low-hanging fruit to get to. Okay, thank you.
All right, we're still looking at a motion, 45 to 68. All those in favor of the motion are lumping these and voting this once. Hands up. Make your hands down those opposed. Okay, we're going to do this all at once. The motion, I think we, we still need, we need a motion to actually do this, then. We agreed to, we agreed to jump over everything, but now we need a motion to do it. Go ahead.
I will make a motion to approve Articles 45 through 68.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded?
Taken.
All right, now we're discussing. The gentleman in black is there? No? Yes, thank you. Okay. Questions or comments on the motion, which is to adopt as written all of the articles, 45 through 68? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Okay, thank you, the motion passes, that means we adopt it as written, all of the articles, 45 through 68. Article 69. Will, don't leave him.
I want to go.
Article 69, okay. See if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit established before the town acted by state law, in the event that the municipal budget approval under the preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than that property tax levy limit. Is there a motion on Article 69?
I make a motion, we approve Article 69 as written.
Is there a second? The move is seconded by Nancy to adopt Article 69 as written. Are there questions or comments?
I do.
Okay. What is it?
In every way, since we made a motion. It was said in the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Moderator, and I want to get this out before the meeting ends, that it was some concerns about the passive process, where you have been having motions made, from the warrant finding committee of the school committee, and we made an agreement that if somebody came on and wanted to make the motions, I more than will think we'd say that, but that hasn't happened. And so, any criticisms that we have in the future, the way that you're having motions, I think is...
Perfect, I agree.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go back to Article 69. Nancy, so you're going to ask, what is it?
Yeah, this is something that I'm really familiar with. Is this a recently enacted state law, and can you, can the selectmen explain it?
Michelle is going to...
I will, yeah. The law was created in 2005. We used it in my 11 years as treasurer, we've used it once before, probably 10, 11, 12 years ago. I know 10 was an odd number of times, and so the tax levy is determined by what we appropriate, less the deductions that we use in tax commitment. We also have the school appropriation, we have the county appropriation. The tax levy limit is based specifically on the municipal appropriation. So where the school's appropriation went down this year by 500,000, that used to be raised by taxes, and the towns went up, it kind of balances itself out, but that tax levy limit still only looks at the municipal end. So we will definitely not go up in taxes, but that tax levy limit will probably be breached.
Other questions? Nancy?
What happens if we vote in the negative on this question?
Then, prior to commitment, we would have to revisit the budget at another time again. Yes, yes.
Additional comments requested?
Yes, sir. I don't believe that that's accurate in all circumstances. I'm looking at the statute, and there are provisions where limits can be exceeded for catastrophes, unfunded mandates, citizens' initiatives, court orders, loss of state or federal funding. And there are also provisions, I'm just reading this quickly, but it appears to me that the town can still exceed this mandate or statutory amount by doing so by secret ballot. So the citizens would have to vote by secret ballot to exceed the levy, if I'm reading this correctly.
And you are, we got, because the state is still in this pandemic, June 30th, making this, well, this is one of the things that we've made in the executive board, having a rule going by secret ballot. But normally, you're right, we would normally have to vote in this order by secret ballot. It's lifted because of the pandemic, for which we will have to make the payment. So there are two different things, there's exceeding the limit for special circumstances, and there's increasing the limit. These aren't special circumstances, I mean, these aren't catastrophic events that have happened, so we're increasing on this, on this warrant. And normally, we would have to vote by secret ballot, you have to write in yesterday, now we count the votes, but until June 30th, it's able to just be shown.
I just think it's great to have that extra safeguard, frankly. You know, if I'm going to go spend extra money, and somebody says, well, wait a minute, you know, you have this restriction, versus just being able to just go ahead and spend it. I like the extra check myself, so I'm going to vote against it.
Other questions or comments on Article 69? Yes, sir.
Is there a commitment to a tax rate, I mean, yeah, a tax rate will be down?
There's not a commitment that will go down, we won't know until the state numbers come in on revenue sharing, there is a likely critical down, it will not go up.
I guess, one reason why I say that is relative to this, is our undesignated fund balance has increased substantially in the last two years, and I assume it's going until this year, there's no reason not to assume that. And so, we have already exceeded what we, what's recommended that we have in the bank, and I'm sure the auditor's going to find the same thing again this year.
We appropriated off just under $500,000 because of warrants funding on that.
Right, that's in there, but we don't know yet what our number will be this year.
Other comments or questions on item, Article 69? Ted?
Yeah, there's three bills, I mentioned the first two earlier, the revenue sharing, going up to 5% from 3.5% that it is now, and that was voted on committee unanimously. Kicking back to what we voted on years ago, as far as how much the education goes, that's been voted all the way through. And then, the third one was reimbursement for homestead. It has been at 77%, so when you think you're getting this $25,000 off your tax rate, you're actually getting only 17% of that now, so we voted to give it 100%. And all those bills are sitting on the governor's table, so that would be the final stand-up whether we get that money or not. But I believe with the amount of people that voted for this on both sides of the aisle, that all three of these bills will pass, and that will change the amount of money that we get this year. But not now, it will know by the time of commitment.
Okay, other questions or comments on Article 69? Before we vote, did the Mary Grant team have a special deal for us before we go?
Absolutely, we're going to have a fire sale before you leave.
Fortunately, if you want to take something with you, this is the Mary Grant folks over here. Thank you, thank you folks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, so the motion on Article 69 is to adopt the article as written. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. It passes. Article 69 is adopted as written. Now I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Will, second by the chief. Thank you all, you've been very patient, and a good audience, thanks for coming. Leave your cards at the table, leave the beautiful card, leave your card at the table.